All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Camden Select Board's special Board meeting for the sole purpose of reviewing the annual FY23 budget. I'm not going to, we did the meeting can be viewed, obviously, on, as our agenda suggests, on YouTube, as well as the, we have the hybrid operating. The link, the hybrid, is on our agenda, which can be found in the Camden main website, under Select Board, under packets, if you would like to link in that way. Thank you. But with that, we have entered right into our agenda, which is discussion and hopefully approval of our FY23 budget for the town of Camden. What I would suggest, Audrey, as to go through this, we would hold, unless the board disagrees, we would hold revenues to discuss last, and we would discuss the expenses by department first. Which means our first department discussion would be the, I believe, the general government, admin, and finance, correct, Audra?
Yes.
Okay. So let me just get to my updated sheet from, is Jody available?
So Jody-
I'm trying to promote Jody to a panelist, and she declined.
Oh.
That's not a good sign.
I always knew she was smart.
I'll send her a message saying-
I always knew she was a smart one.
That was my first time, actually, seeing what happens when somebody declines.
I'd never heard of it. So basically, on the general admin, and just globally, we have, obviously, in our, in front of us, the recommendations for the, from the department heads for FY23, we have the recommendation of the town manager, and now we have the additional recommendation of the work recently completed by the Camden Budget Committee. And it looks like all three numbers are identical to, on the spreadsheet, sorry, the sheet, it's not a spreadsheet, the sheet I'm looking at. Do we have any questions of this account from the board?
So, department head, town manager-
Do you have trouble seeing? I can't tell. Do you have trouble seeing?
Oh, sorry, this is the woman I sent you.
I was raising my hand. I can't tell where I should, is this format lends itself to, do you want us to just jump in, or probably not?
Yeah. Yeah, well, yeah, the whole purpose is, probably, for us, the board-
That's, yeah, that's probably easier than me kind of giving an overview, because all of you were there for most of it.
Yeah, just so everybody understands, we, we were in the, in the backdrop when the Budget Committee was deliberating, and there were a number of presentations made by department heads, and Audra added quite a bit from her perspective. But if there are any questions of the board, I certainly want to ask them now. And again, we'll do this by department. This, Audra, this department pretty much covers everybody in the, in this building. Is that correct?
No, no. So it covers, you know, the front, the front office, the finance office, and then Janice and I.
Okay. Okay. Questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, Allison, you don't have to.
Oh, I don't. Okay, that's what I was trying to get at, because it seems like it's hard for you to see me right here.
It is, when I'm looking at this, but, you know, in this situation, we're having a, this could easily be a work session, by the way. It's been, we've done that that way in the past. But I was trying to combine this work session with approval, because we, we have got a lot of stack-up of information between now and the completion of the warrants and all the stuff for election coming forward. And next week is our last Select Board meeting before that deadline. So, go ahead, Allison.
So, more generally, when would be an appropriate time, or is there ever an appropriate time, to make comments or have a discussion about the setup of the budget and some of the overall things? We often talk about how-
Categories?
Yeah, certain categories or certain structurings are not conducive to understanding, but then, we tend to then go through it, sort of in that way. I mean, separating out the, okay, we're going to keep the revenues last, because that's different, and when in some cases, it really, revenue should inform some of our decisions. Or, one of the things that jumps out at me here is, like, the Opera House auditorium section shouldn't be in general government. Especially as we were just talking about moving with, to the budget approval process, that is going to be cost-center based, and, you know, the idea is to give people, you know, we've got a lot of antiquated terminology, leisure services and things like that. Eventually, I think, as you're asking people to vote on these cost centers, those, just the, what we call things, can be triggers. But we-
Very true.
I mean, the, obviously, there's a portion of the Opera House, there's the building itself, that very much is, you know, general government. But the programming aspect of the Opera House, so I know, I know that for this year, it's-
You're kind of stuck.
Right. That maybe at some point, we should just have a-
I honestly think, good, excellent question, because I think there are some confusions. We're always trying to clear things up. But a lot of this is inherited by us and the staff. I honestly, really, in my, and, when changes are made, and Jody can tell you, the accounting changes, they have to occur, and not small. There are the readjusting of departments or that kind of thing, takes quite a bit of effort. But it seems like that's, in and of itself, its, its own charge. We should have, if we want to do anything, we have its own session.
Yeah, for chart, for chart of accounts.
To dedicate it just to that, because it's an excellent discussion to be had. I mean, it's only need to add it to our list of priorities, and again, but I, I think it is. Because I, especially now, to your point you made, Allison, I, was it seven or nine categories we have in the budget currently that are on the ballot? People don't know what leisure services is. They don't know that that includes the library, for example.
It's just a weird way of, and then you've got Parks and Rec, and then the, so-
I think that we should not lose sight of it for FY24, to, to, you know, to, to take a look at it in detail. It'd be, I can tell you, it's not easy.
Right. I mean, I think-
You should have a workshop on the, on the chart of accounts.
And just the budget presentation, like, how it's, yeah.
I think, we also have a new Budget Committee, and a new in the sense that charter has changed.
Yeah, we should talk about the purpose of the Budget Committee, too, the whole budget process.
The whole process. I, I agree. It is, we can do, we can do better.
Yeah.
And I think we should, we should have a session just on that.
It might, I mean, it might actually, at some point, be a budget allocation to go, you know, to switch over to some new system, or, at one point, when Ginny was here, and I know some of that was controversial because of the color printing and whatever else.
Right.
And the people that have been here for a long time and were familiar with this were like, no, this is the way we like it, just these numbers in a spreadsheet. But some of us who were new, actually, it's kind of like how Rockford does the budget, basically. You've got all this information in there. It's the way a lot of nonprofits do their budget, that, if the idea is that it tells a story a little bit.
I think it's an excellent, I'll have it on my list, make sure we do, a special session for all those things. But I think, and we keep, we comment a lot of times about what lessons learned from last budget, and we didn't do anything with it.
Right. Because it is a big deal. And I know Audra's been, you know, she chips away at it some with the notes and stuff.
Oh, yeah.
But if we actually wanted to make anything majorly different, we'd have to understand what the implications were, and whether it's worth it. And maybe we learn a little bit about changing it, and we decide, you know what, it's fine the way it is. But-
No, I agree.
Then I can refrain from making all those comments today, just trying to, like, push them into each discussion.
I think, I think it's- Take notes today, and, and then have a workshop, and-
Yeah, I've got that note down. Yeah, I agree. But with that, let's go back to our budget process, and the admin and finance, are there any comments, questions on that?
I have a question. So the, the full-time wages, I can't remember where we put the COLA. Is it in here, or is it separate?
It's built in throughout the entire budget.
It's built in. And this year, we, we have a COLA?
Yes.
And what's the percentage?
5.9%.
Okay.
Yep. So anytime you see either full-time, part-time, or just general wages, for every single department, it's built into that.
And for the people who are listening to us, COLA is cost of living adjustment. I, I'm always the one who-
That's fine.
Don't use acronyms, and here I go.
That's fine, Sophie. But with that, if you don't hear any other comments, I'm sorry, Allison, go ahead.
So when, are we going to have just a general discussion about the COLA at all?
Go ahead. You can start now.
I thought maybe Sophie was leading into that, but it seems-
Happy to?
Is it what?
Happy to?
I mean, maybe, I mean, we want to talk about the justification for that, and what goes into your thinking process.
We have to talk about it now, because it's implicit in every department, as later.
It's a good idea.
So, you know, we tried to remain, you know, consistent, particularly with, you know, we talked about this quite a bit, I think, last year and the year before that. And I think there was a real desire to make sure that, instead of just, you know, kind of arbitrarily throwing in, like, a 3% or whatever the number was for the year, having it tracked with something. So over the past few years, we've been trying to look at, you know, what's the Social Security index? Last year, when we were preparing the budget, it was at zero. So we, we, across the board, there was a 0% cost of living adjustment. And then this year, at the time we were preparing the budget, it was 5.9%. And both of those changed a little bit as the year went on. But that's, you know, we just need to sort of pick a point in time and make a best, you know, best guess, based on the data that we have then.
Sure.
And so that's what you went with, is the 5.9?
Yes.
Yep.
And now, the only thing with, with that is it, I mean, it just provides a much bigger increase for people that are already making more.
Yeah, that's true.
It's true. It's across the board. It's across the board. So every, every salaried or labored person is getting a 5.9% increase in wages.
The only way you could change that, and I don't even know if it's legal, is to have it by, is to have a progressive. So, and it's very complicated to calculate.
Except we also have step functions and salary, which you'd have to analyze by step.
Yeah.
That's another, it gets a little complicated. In a typical government system, it's pretty complicated.
Yeah. And I would say there, you know, there are things like, and, you know, we'll probably talk about this at a different time, but it does relate to all of this. Like, with the police department, this is the year that their three-year contract is, or collective bargaining agreement needs to be renewed. And so, we pretty much, you know, they had, they had sort of agreed to certain things when we were preparing the budget. And one of the things that I really wanted to do was sort of bring them, bring them to be consistent with other town employees.
Yeah.
So that instead of them sitting outside of our step and grade plan, and sitting outside of, you know, having to have this conversation about, oh, well, you know, the police union, it's in their CBA, so we've got to do it for everyone else.
Right.
Trying to bring them in line with more of what we do on a, you know, personnel policy level.
Yep.
And so this is sort of one example where, you know, being able to sort of match up the COLA across the entire organization with what the police union asked for, and bringing their step and grade scale onto the town scale at the same time, it's been, it's been very useful for that purpose.
And so the 6.1% increase, the driver-
5.9?
No, 6.1. On the spreadsheet, it's 6.1.
Oh, you're talking about the overall budget?
The overall budget.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
So the 6.1, 1% increase is driven by wages, basically?
Yes. Yeah.
A lot of it, yeah.
So, and that's-
And that the COLA is part of that.
Yeah. And I think that's a, a good point. So we, you know, we sort of started, this is the third year of a three-year push across the entire organization to re-
Right.
Look at, you know, all of our job descriptions, and all of our positions, and, you know, reclassify, you know, all the jobs that need to be reclassified, and, you know, set them on, place on the wage scale where it's more logical. And the admin department was one of the final areas to go through that. So that's also built in. It's not just the COLA, it's also the wage reclassification.
Yeah, I think you've got to remember, too, cost, by his very definition, cost of living allowance applies at all levels of income. A person who's making $20,000 more a year than somebody else, has the same kind of cost of living impact of goods and services. So that's the philosophy of it. But it's 5.9. Is that correct?
5.9 for cost of living. But, like I said, with the full-time wages that you see on this, that also includes adjustments to their-
Step and grade.
Pay grades, because they're the, one of the final departments to have that, have that done.
Understood.
The other question I have is on overtime. It seems that we are consistently, I mean, we're not consistently-
Not in this one. Not in admin.
No, but we're budgeting 2000, but we're, I guess, in 2020, we were there. Okay.
Yeah.
But not in 21.
Other accounts see bigger numbers, I think, that's for sure.
No, it's fine.
Any other questions, Allison?
What are stipends?
Stipends, that's for things like, you know, phones.
Oh, really?
Yeah, well, we get a stipend.
Is that where we are?
Yeah. Select Board stipend of 1,500 each.
Oh, okay.
There's some other things we give stipends for.
Yeah. Any other questions, Allison?
It always seems like it would be nice if we could find ways to be able to do some kind of merit-based rewards for people, just to have a little bit more flexibility as you sort of see it. Like, if a certain employee can take over some kind of a responsibility, would there be any usefulness in, like, increasing that line? Or do you already have what you need to-
I, I do think that that would be, I mean, not, probably not in this department for this year, but there are other, there are other places, and I think we need to think of it comprehensively across all departments. I'm really, and this is something that Jody and I have talked about a lot. I really want to move away from the step and grade plan being based on years of service.
Yes.
And have it more progressive, based on performance, based on, you know, additional education and training, you know, other sort of merit-based markers, so that we're not so stuck in this years of service doldrums. Because I don't think it always reflects what we intend for it to reflect. So, that's a bigger-
Yeah, that's basically what I'm getting at with this question.
It also include for temporary relief of higher responsibility, just to change, being compensating, compensated adequately, because it is a burden. And usually, I mean, we don't have that in our budget to, to give a little bit more for those extra responsibilities that are taken. So I think it's a good idea to kind of rethink.
I think it's great. Like, I think, you know, for example, Janice, she's going to be, you know, acting in my role for a little while.
Janice is moving here.
Thing like when, you know, Jody goes away on vacation, and Marlene acts as the finance, you know, there are all kinds of scenarios.
Where if somebody can solve the public bathrooms problem.
Or, yeah, for, there's a lot of things that we could incentivize. So I do think that, you know, doing sort of across the board, change to the personnel policy, so we're less dependent on the years of service as the only metric, but also having just some ability to, you know, do other performance incentives.
Absolutely essential. You're going to reward superstars and try to encourage others to step up also. I absolutely agree.
This whole district does that a lot. Every, pretty much every school board meeting, it seems like they have some kind of a thing where they're approving stipends for, for this and that. And it's, you know, $1,500 here, $1,500 there. But, okay.
I also have one comment. Can you guys hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Real loud.
Or can hear you.
Tone it down, Jody.
Can you see me, too? I don't even, I don't know where I am. But anyway, just to, on Allison's comment about, you know, incentive type, or stipends, when somebody takes over a new role, or does additional things outside of their scope. Audra and I sort of, when we started this three-year tran, reclassification of wages, and we are in our final year, that really was the driver of the increases in, in the wages, because these, these employees have taken on way more than what before, for years. And so that's one of the reasons why we did such a, a detailed, you know, reclassification. So, you know, just to recognize that the extra things that these employees are doing.
So you took a special look at, at stepping grade. Correct?
Yeah. And like, like Audra said, we really do want to get away from the years of service, but I'm, I'm still trying to figure out how to do that.
It's, it's, there are many ways of doing it, but I think it should stay on, on the table.
Yeah. And I, I mean, and I think that, you know, what we've done for now with, with some of the current staff we have now, that works. But at some point, you know, unfortunately, Janice and Marlene, and, you know, people that have been here for 20-plus years are going to want to retire.
That, that's not allowed.
Yeah, yeah. Aside from Mark banning it, it's going to happen. And so I think that, you know, we're just going to have to have this, this alternative system in place, because we want to incentivize people who are going to be coming in after them to, to do what they did, to, you know, I don't think we're ever going to be able to find people coming in with all the skills that somebody like Janice or Marlene has. They're going to have to learn it over time. But we want to make it as, you know, sort of beneficial as possible for new people coming in to do that. Or even people that we have here currently to, to do that. So-
Carrot, carrot and stick.
Exactly. So I think that, yeah, we'll have to work on that. But I think it's a really good point, and that's going to be, that's an even better, a better way of helping to move that along.
Right. Any other questions on, on general government category? Going to entertain a motion to accept the, a number? Mark?
I'll make a motion that we accept the Budget Committee number of $909,500.
Which, just for, by, by, stance, it's the same number as the-
Town manager.
Town manager.
For some reason, yeah.
That makes a second.
Motion made in second discussion. Anyone? Calls in favor for Zippo. Thank you very much. Let's move on to the next department, which is, scroll carefully, which is the professional services. Again, the, looks like the, all three department head, town manager, and Budget Committee have all agreed on the improved, the $93,568 amount here, which is principally, well, mostly the legal, which we've had, same in the past, as well as the stipend for professional services from engineering companies.
So, but what happened to the full-time wages that were in FY21? I mean, we, did we move that, that, I'm assuming it's Bill Kelly's?
Yeah, so-
Sorry, so did we move that somewhere else?
Yes, yes. Well, the-
Well, we had an inter-local agreement with Belfast, where we shared Bill. So we paid for all of his, you know, wages and benefits. And then Belfast reimbursed us by, like, you know, for two-thirds the cost.
Right.
And then Bill moved on from Belfast. So this- So this is, it's more of like a, just a fixed contract for legal services instead of, you know, like a salary position.
So it's in professional services, it's not a wage, it's not salary anymore?
Right, yeah, so it's like a fixed.
So we pay his firm instead of paying him as an employee?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Question, first off, I apologize for being late. I just put it in my brain, 6:30, normal start time, even though I had it in my.
I didn't have purpose just to trick you.
Even in my, even though in my schedule, it says 6 o'clock, so. But I don't look at my schedule, so that's the problem. I plan on asking some questions that I pretty much, sometimes I know the answers to, but I want to make sure that people watching understand. And one of the questions I have about the legal is, I understand we've changed the deal with Bill. Now, does that, are are there unlimited hours? We don't pay him by the hour anymore.
No.
And so his services are generally for when he's available, we don't pay extra hours.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to verify that.
In the, not increasing the budget on professional services, the $18,000 seems adequate for what we've been tracking year in, year out?
Yes.
Yeah.
Other questions on this one, Alice, go ahead.
So I think I learned this from you, Bob, but I'm always suspicious, or Bob taught me to be suspicious of like really precise numbers for general, because this category is supposed to be a little bit discretionary, right? Based on what comes up and what we, you know, what we need.
Correct, correct.
And it does seem like this is an area where we, you know, when we can get outside professional service, that's help, you know, sometimes that's useful to the town and sometimes it isn't. But is it, this makes me think it's like you've got it all exactly in your head already? What we're going to use that for?
No, definitely not for this year.
It's, it's more, I read it as more of a contingency.
Yeah.
I could look at the FY '21 actuals when I, I think I remember what occurred there, where it's almost $69, $60,000 we had spent on on professional services versus other years. It's, it's been a bit of flip-flop, so it's, you know, it's a budget, it's a number. We just allocating to, you know, make it easy to utilize. And by the way, $18,000 doesn't buy a heck of a lot of professional services.
That's kind of one of the half a study.
Might buy half a man month, maybe.
We're also carrying some money in that account as well. So we carried $30,000 from FY '21 to FY '22, and so we have a remaining balance of about $28,000 in there.
So we could even.
In a reserve?
Nope, just in that, in that specific account. That's one of the.
Okay, even though we've spent.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying.
Even with the actuals to date or?
Yes.
So that that brings the balance to 44, right?
The the actuals to date that you're looking at are actually from, I think, January. These have not been updated.
Right, right.
Allison, the actual spent right now is $20,500.
Oh, I see.
The balance of about $28,000.
FY, the column is FY '22, actuals to date is highly inaccurate because here we are in, well, we're finishing March, but most likely our accounting is February data not caught up. So you've got to be really careful with paying too much attention there, other than trans, of course.
So for instance, where would, if we needed a higher level of professional to do the camera operating in here and the.
Well, that actually has its own line up above.
Other places for other services.
We might need an engineer this way, I don't know.
That's a good point, that's a good point. But I don't think it's intended to cover an operator here or other.
No, but I mean, it is, it is good to think about some of the upcoming priority projects that you have that don't quite fit well with any one department function.
Do you have some in mind, so we should put a number on them?
Well, I do, I mean, there is additional work. And of course, you all need to decide on this about the parking management study. So the program development, the policy development and the financial pro forma work. I think that, you know, what we have that we're going to carry forward and what we, you know, with the $18,000 will cover all of that.
Just that, though?
No, no, it'll, it would cover that and something else, but not, I mean, not necessarily a lot more left after that. You wouldn't necessarily have all kinds of money left for an additional.
You're recommending an increase in the 18s to some number to give us some contingency on this? Because we always spend, and it seems to me, we're always looking for pockets for small engineering pieces of work we need to get done or support.
I would say, I'm hesitant to say yes, just because I know how much we have in contingency that we're carrying forward. But, you know, you might want to kind of revisit this after you have that discussion. So if you're not comfortable sort of approving it until you have a look at that in totality.
Well, it seems to me that if we want to do that, we can always adjust contingency when we get to that rather than going back and forth. So I would suggest we stay with what we have here and keep this in mind when we get to contingency.
We also have a carry of 26.
Yeah, of course.
So so we're at 44.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the numbers as recommended?
I'll make a motion that we approve the numbers from the department head, town manager and Budget Committee, which all agree at $93,568 for professional services.
My second.
Discussion, alls in favor? You're right, I can't see that armor at all. That's okay, I'm just kidding. All right, onward to now, planning, code enforcement, community development assessing.
This one is a little weird.
Yes.
So I'll explain it from the beginning because my recommendation has actually changed between when the Budget Committee met and voted on this and now, just based on, you know, additional information and opportunities. So, and this is more for for folks at home than everyone here. But as you all know, Kerry Leishman is technically a Town of Rockport employee currently. So his salary and benefits sit in the Town of Rockport. And then we contract with Rockport for Kerry's services. And it's like a 50-50 split between the two towns. And likewise, Caitlin Thompson is a Town of Camden employee, and Rockport contracts for, I'd say roughly about 20%, maybe a little bit less of her salary and benefits. It's a slightly different arrangement in that regard. However, Kerry would like to come over and be a full-time Town of Camden employee. And then Rockport would reimburse us, you know, sort of like, we would do it a little bit differently since they're both going to be sitting here as Town of Camden employees, where we'd have sort of like a fixed amount where that we would get reimbursed by Rockport for. And it'd be roughly about 50% of the cost of assessing. So that's both Kerry and Caitlin's wages and benefits as well as, you know, certain piece of equipment that we've, you know, agreed to purchase for the upcoming year. So that's, you'll see that reflected here in the expense side of the budget, but also in the revenue side.
The Rockport income will be in the revenue side, which we'll address later soon.
Yes.
But the, the, this, what number did you, was your, your previous recommendation for this category?
So the Budget Committee previously.
They approved 613.
Yes.
And you're at 692-ish now. But what, your recommendation to Budget Committee was 613?
Yes.
So the sole difference here is we're talking about an assessing, which is, you know, obviously adding about, about $80,000 to this account versus the $82,000 that was earlier in in the assessors' contract in FY '20. Oh, that's FY '23, I'm sorry. My guess, my question is, what's the net of, what's the net of revenue from Rockport to the cost to Camden for this category? If we were adding revenue and expense here, what would it be?
So I'll, so I can be precise, I'll kick it over to Jody.
Numbers, ladies.
Are we going to bill?
Hi. So combining Kerry and Caitlin's wages and benefits and non-wages and benefits expense, which would be the office supplies, mileage and lodging, professional development and organizational dues.
Yep.
That total comes out to $286,600.
All right, 286K, okay.
We've had conversations with Rockport about what they would offer the Town of Camden, and they are offering $98,000. So that brings us down to a net expense of $188,600. So this is a comparison, I took Caitlin and Kerry in the current year, what it costs the town, including all of their non-wage expenses. And that is $151,200. So we're seeing an increase right now of about $37,400. And I know that there's conversations about Rockland chipping some for their services. So we're going to see that go down.
Is the FY '22, $151,200, is that year-to-date?
No, no, that's what the budget is for FY '22.
Oh, thank you.
That's putting what?
Thank you.
Rock pays us for Caitlin. Rockport for for Kerry. We pay half of Kerry's expenses right now to Rockport every month.
Okay.
So so what they're willing to to pay, the change is going to cost the town $37,000 at this point. But Rockland is going to come in and they're going to do some work there and they'll contribute to to that fund as well.
Maybe, that deal's not cut. Hopefully, that's the potential there, Mark, that's correct.
Okay.
Did I, sorry, is Rockport's total contribution is?
$98,000.
Going down? It's not that we're paying them that much more, or is it?
They always paid, Caitlin was never 50-50 between Camden.
Caitlin was about 20%.
Yeah, she was more like a 20-80 split.
80 on Camden's side.
Yes, yeah.
But Mark's statement is right, it's $37,000 more a year excluding anything that might occur with Rockland.
So my question is, can you articulate, and again, this is, you know, for a lot of the people listening and paying attention, can you articulate why this is a good deal for the town? Why it's an advantage to have Kerry and Caitlin both here as town employees?
I'd say that sort of the the goal and what they're looking at doing is basically running like a regional assessing department from the Town of Camden. So in addition to, and unfortunately, just because of timing with, you know, like Rockland being a city council, our budget cycles don't match up completely. So I, you know, I, I'm very confident that assessing services for the Town of Camden will pretty much be a wash. So we'll, yeah, through our agreements with other municipalities, basically loaning Kerry and Caitlin out, it'll cover the cost of assessing services.
It's just that Rockland, we will not know that in time, forget this.
Well, I know it, I'm just not comfortable publicly saying it until, until they've, yeah. But we'll have an answer on that next week.
Okay.
So the question I have is, when, so they reimburse us the wages or they pay a fee?
It's just going to, the way that I'm going to set it up, very simple, just a flat.
Stipend.
A flat, this is how much we charge the Town of Rockport or Rockland for assessing services.
Okay, so it's a fee?
Yeah.
Okay.
So are they gonna, what's going to happen when when stressful things happen in other towns? And Rockland goes through a revaluation and every, that's, they would be going, they would have hours at other places, not having people come here to.
Right, yeah, and luckily, Rockland already did their revale last year.
Last year.
Yeah, last year. And I mean, and Rockport's going through it at the same, yeah, concurrently. So, you know, they're already kind of juggling that. But we do, we have a, you know, a better idea of sort of what's coming ahead of us in Rockland. And there are a few other communities too in the mid-coast where they're much smaller. Like, you know, Camden, Rockport, Rockland are certainly the largest that would be part of this group.
Right.
But there's some other smaller communities that they're at a point where their assessor, their assessor's agent, whatever the case may be, are moving on pretty soon. And so it's, it's pretty likely they're going to reach out to Kerry and Caitlin for that service. And it would be not very time-consuming, given the size of many of these municipalities.
So the contract that the other towns would have would be with the Town of Camden, not with Kerry and Caitlin?
Yes.
Now, what kind of liability does that leave us with if, say, Kerry and Caitlin want to do something different?
Want to leave?
Leave, or if they, then we're, then we're stuck with a commitment to do assessing for?
No, because we would.
We'll plan for that not to happen?
Exactly. And I mean, and we have talked, we have talked to Kerry.
They're noticed and we're like, ah.
Both about it and said, hey, you'd probably financially do a lot better if you struck out on your own and had your own.
Sure.
I really like Kerry and Caitlin, they're really.
They really don't have any interest in doing that, they like.
It's the risk you carry with any position.
We're carrying the risk instead of having them carry.
Yeah, I like, and the bottom line of that is, I like control.
Yeah, that's what they want to do, this will make them happy.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, they're very enthusiastic about taking on more towns. They think that it's it's possible for them and they professionally, they see it as a great.
Right, right.
Development opportunity.
They would be just so great to do more things for our town. Both of them could do other things too. But if this is what they, if they like assessing and they don't want to do.
Yeah.
They're just, they're very good at communicating and understanding how the town.
Yeah, I do think there are things that they want to skill up in, you know, particularly Caitlin and GIS related work. So I do think there are opportunities for that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
He really filled in for the town manager over in Rockport.
Yes, yeah, he did.
He lived to tell about it, so. I mean, he's really good.
Really good with legislative advocacy and policy stuff outside of just assessing. Like, he's done so much of the assessing piece of it.
I'm going to get back to the budget, are any more questions about this budget line? Did Audra explain?
Oh, another, another thing, just so none of you forget. This is the one, the one department where we are proposing a new position. And that's the addition of up planners.
Thank you, thank you. For, you'd said that during the Budget Committee discussion about the planning department, and we're adding another position here. That was already in the numbers you discussed with the Budget Committee, as I recall.
Yes, yeah, we had that talk with them about it.
Okay.
Do you want to talk about that position a little bit, just so people know?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, I would say, if you were to look at any one department that was impacted by the pandemic and workload and what it's sort of meant for the the town more broadly, the department that's sort of been put under the most stress in terms of workload has definitely been planning in code enforcement. And that's meant that, you know, they're so focused on the day-to-day that a lot of our more long-term strategic planning priorities and needs and things that we wanted to move ahead have really suffered because, you know, Jeremy hasn't been able to focus his attention on those sorts of projects. He's been more in the, you know, the weeds of the day-to-day and kind of, you know, helping, one, train Rosie, two, you know, some, there are certain enforcement actions that are outside of, you know, a lot of what she's doing is just keeping up with issuing building permits and all the other stuff has kind of fallen to to him to some extent. And that's really not the intention of that position. And the only way that I can see alleviating that, because it's not slowing down, it's not stopping, is by bringing on another person to help with that. And the idea is that they would be doing more of the, you know, staffing of the planning board. They would help to some extent with some code, some of the more higher-level complicated, code-related issues. They would also be doing, I think, more of the, you know, the type of ordinance amendments that we talk about a lot, you know, with the zoning ordinance. And my hope is to have Jeremy focus more on things like, you know, the flood resiliency checklist. You know, there's, there's just that and looking at updating our comp plan and then making sure that our zoning ordinance is consistent with our comprehensive plan and all those sorts of things that we've talked about and we want to do. But we've really been, you know, hamstrung by the amount of day-to-day work coming into that office.
Okay. With that, could I have a motion to accept, I'm sorry, Allison, I can see your hand again.
Um, that's okay. That's what we have Sophie and Mark for.
It's my only function.
It's really, it's, it's great, thank you. So is there a way that, because I obviously agree that we need more help.
So is there a way that, because I obviously agree that we need more help over there, but are, have you thought about maybe having that person be in a different part of the building? Or, because it seems like no matter what over there, just because of the nature of the conversations that happen over there and the kind of revolving door of people coming in with their, it's like build, it's like non-stop building permit kind of stuff. It's almost like no matter who is over there, they get, even, even when I'm over there, I find myself helping people with, like, how to. Right, just can I build this in the village zone? Can we do the, and it just, it almost seems like it would be nice to have somebody just like segregated a little bit or a clear division of responsibilities or a, and I guess it's not, I mean, it's not like whether I'm going to vote for it or not. But it seems like there is confusion, I guess, about.
Department locations.
There's a confusion about the role of, you know, that planner economic development position because of the history of it in the town and the different kind of meanings that those words have taken on. And so I think at some point it would be good to kind of clarify what, you know, what does economic development mean in Camden? Or what is, what are the types of things that, whose job is this, whose job is that? Like, is there anybody that's going to be working on, like, communicating our planning strategies?
I presume that sometime, Audrey, you'll be addressing roles and responsibilities once you decide who you're going to hire or who you propose to hire.
Part of, I think part of bringing in a new position, we need a work plan for that whole department. I think that's going to be really important for making sure that from the beginning, we're not accidentally getting into a situation where that position that we had a very clear intent for gets focused on something else that we didn't want.
Diluted, gets diluted.
Or, or even with Jeremy's role, he keeps getting drawn back into doing more of the code enforcement stuff.
Right, I mean, that's because he's useful, he's helpful, and so it's like almost him being over there. I don't want Jeremy helping people with little code things because he's so good at that other stuff.
Makes sense, makes sense.
So, yeah, that's, I guess that's my, my answer to how I want to, I want to manage it moving forward is having a work plan for that whole department and then the individual work plans for each position.
That's essential. Sophie, you have one last question?
Yeah, just a quick one. Can we automate building permits?
Yeah, that's in process.
Great question.
It's like, it's really, you fill out a form, you pay your fee, bam, you have it, right? Does, we should not be using somebody's time to do that?
That's the email we just received from Janice telling us about the automation of the permit process.
Well, she was, I think that was more about the TextMyGov, but.
That was just a teaser.
It's funny though, so Iwork is another thing that we're setting up, which is an online permitting and licensing system.
Right.
And so that, that would do everything that you're saying. And without even knowing it, one, one company is a parent company of the other, so.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, it worked out pretty well.
You want to keep chugging along?
Along by nestling.
I have a motion to accept or interject or modify.
I will make a motion that we approve the new town manager budget of $691,985 because of the changes since the Budget Committee made its recommendations.
Excellent.
My second.
Motion made, second discussion. Well, who's in favor? Great, that's, it's gonna be interesting to see how that one rolls out, Audrey. Onto next department, which would be, just to aggravate a little bit, Sophie, it's IT, which is information technology.
No, it's spelled information technology.
I know, but I just was abbreviating it.
I like it when you do that.
Keep your weight. Anyway, IT budget across the board is 129,500. Any elements in here that are new, Audrey? Is it the same old as we've carried out? It looks like it's the same as been for.
Yeah, I guess the only thing that I would say is that. Yeah, licensing is definitely going up. And there were a lot of, you know, Iwork, TextMyGov, what's the third one?
The domains.
What's the third?
The domain names.
Oh, there's another one that we're, oh, Ecode, yeah, Ecode 360.
Ecode.
And the ordinance also the?
That's the Ecode, yeah.
It's Ecode, okay.
So all of those, we sort of paid the upfront fee for last year. And a lot of that was just done through, you know, contingency or, you know, additional funds that we had one place or another. But the year-to-year cost of the licensing, we're feeling for the first time this year.
Mark, go ahead.
Sophie had her hand up first.
So my question is, because of those fees now reflecting in the budget, are we revising the fees? Or is it something we should do? Are the fees we're charging basically covering, at least for part of the licensing?
I think when you have, I hate to say this, but, yeah, I mean, that's theoretically, yes.
Right, so, so it's something we need to do, we need to address all the fee schedule.
Yes.
And make sure that we, that we include that rising cost.
People's salaries, I mean, those fee, all those little projects are eating up with the entire town bandwidth. Public works, everything.
It shouldn't be on the taxpayers, it should be on the.
No, because we don't have time for anything else except for figuring, getting people's like flowers out of the sidewalk and stuff.
That's right, that's right. No, that's a good point, but is enough money, in your opinion, $63,000 to cover the licensing, the manpower needed to get these systems running for us?
It's more, at this point, it's not just getting them running, it's more of the year-to-year fee that we're going to be paying for them.
I see, I see. To, okay, I get it.
Yeah.
Mark?
My quick question, again, just for explanation. I know you spent a couple of years really upgrading our IT structure. Can you just give a little quick reference of that? What's happened in the last couple of years so people understand what they're paying for?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think that the biggest, the biggest initial investment was moving us from physical, I mean, I would love to say that we've completely moved away from physical servers, but we haven't. But I'm making it harder and harder for people to use them, putting more barriers in their way of using them. So moving from having like data storage on physical services or servers in the office to cloud-based servers through Office 365 subscription. And so that was the, you know, the major first investment that the town made. And as you can see, it's, you know, that we have 60 licenses and it's, it's, you know, 14,400 per year. So that was sort of the initial major investment. You know, we all know what happened as a result of the pandemic. So, you know, the year-to-year licensing for things like Zoom. And I think that the, you know, it's on a different line, but also wanting to invest more in GIS and our capabilities there and, you know, our databases and building them out, that's been another part of this. We could throw so much more money into IT than we do now.
Yeah.
But I think it's a matter of, you know, how do we do this in a way that isn't going to be a huge shock? It allows us to add services when we really need them. And I think that, you know, we hit that critical point in terms of, you know, online licensing and permitting. You know, I just can't, like, it became just so essential during the pandemic. I think that we have a lot of sort of redundant paper-based systems in that office that would really help the people that work there when we finally transitioned to it. And I know the transition itself is painful and difficult and time-consuming. But this has been the year where we're really, you know, kind of like biting the bullet to do it. So that goes for the licensing, but it also goes for, you know, things like Ecode 360 and getting all of our ordinances and the charter transitioned over to that. Because it's just so inefficient, the way that we display, like, I, I was helping somebody who came into the office asking about, oh, where in the ordinance does it say this? And even knowing, you know, knowing where it is, having a planning background.
Find it.
Me trying to find it for a member of the public, I thought, there's just no way we can ever expect people who are just trying to find this information for themselves to know how to scroll through our zoning ordinance to find these things.
Yeah.
You have to ask Janice really when it comes down to it. Janice is like, finds so many things that I miss.
And so that's, you know, and that's going to help with that because we want people to be able to
Search engine.
access information more easily on their own. Because it's good for everyone, it's good for members of the public.
Right.
It's good for, you know, our staff and everyone. So, you know, it's, it's difficult, it's time-consuming, but it's, it's going to be worthwhile and it's going to be more efficient for everyone and a better service to the public in the end.
Any other questions?
Allison? And Sophie's got one.
So the, my only concern here was the GIS. And I know there are a couple of other places maybe where this would be in the budget. But overall, just looking at what we've spent so far and then thinking about some of the things that we've talked about, having CAI provide support for interns and because some, like, some of these interns or the committees can do really great stuff, but we can't do all the training. And I just want to make sure, then the number of licenses for ArcGIS, things like that. We've ended up spending a lot of extra time trying to work around having to purchase a $500 license. And I just want to avoid that in the year to come.
So is the question, $12,000 adequate to cover?
Yeah, that is my, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I looked over the budget and can't find other places.
Is there any place, I didn't see it reflect anyplace else, this is it.
This is your chance if you have other.
If $12,000.
Well, but the actual for 2022 is 17, almost 18,000.
Exactly.
The word budgeting 12 for 2023.
Yeah, that's.
Your opinion, Audrey, on, on GIS as far as adequacy of what we're, all the stuff we're attacking right now with software costs, training costs, implementation costs, is this $12,000? I assume it's for buying the software and getting it operating?
I'd say it's for, it's for the licenses. And then there's, you know, it's, you're going to be, yeah, I mean, you're going to be limited in what you can do this year with $12,000.
Then that number seems limited.
It's, it's low.
What would you recommend if you had your harsh desire?
Well, I guess it depends on, you know, what you think are realistic in terms of the, you know, number of sort of projects we can accomplish for this year. So just to give you an idea.
Yeah.
You know, some of the actuals that you're seeing reflected in the FY '22 budget covered off on some of the, some of the stormwater mapping project, not all of it, but some of it. Because, didn't that straddle financial years, Jody?
I don't know, I think some of that was, we also increased. Sorry.
One question, sorry. Thank you. Jody, any comment?
Yes, we did exceptional.
As you heard, repeated, Audrey.
Oh, just with the, with the actuals on the GIS line, did that all, was that all CAI projects?
No, there were, there was one $6,000 expense for the startup for the snowplow route, the software that went into the snowplow trucks.
Yep. Gotcha. Yes.
And then we had Vision Kama, which we split in half because they wanted to charge us two fiscal years' worth. But, yeah, and then stormwater mapping, so.
And then there's that hub site that we set up, some of the.
Data hub.
Making it so that we don't just update things once a year. There's all kinds, a couple of those things are continuous $1,900.
Right.
Fees, but.
And then, you know, things like the, where, you know, the street tree.
Yeah.
And that's ongoing, and if we're gonna, if we're gonna have people doing this work, like volunteers and stuff.
Right.
It's, right now, it's just going to be like me or Dave St. Laurent or somebody explaining to
Right.
Keith Blizzard or somebody how to get this, we're just going to drown if we don't have more.
Fundamental question is, FY.
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
FY, what'd you say? Did you have a number? Did you mention a number?
Yeah, $25,000, that's, that's what.
I didn't, I didn't hear the number, I was just asking.
Yeah, I.
I guess the question is, you know, in FY.
To create new, if you want to inventory all the street trees, if you want to.
FY '21, we were at $10,000 and we weren't doing any near what we're doing today. And now we're at $12,000, which is not an increase at all, that's not even inflation. We're proposing $12,000 for a lot, so it should go up. The question is, what would, what would be a comfortable number to go up to, $20,000?
I mean, I, I'd say, you know, we're, we're at about 18 now. We're probably going to overspend that line because we're finalizing.
We're actually at about 24 right now.
Okay. So, yeah.
See your face, Sophie, as if it's like a frivolous expense. But these are things like licenses for, for mapping software, things that the assessing department uses, things that, it's expensive software, it's like an architect using.
We recommending $25,000 for this, for total for this account?
The entire system where you go on and you see all the property cards and you.
So we're increasing this to $25,000. So we're buying more licenses, we're going to have more maintenance, you cannot just increase that line. So that budget is going to increase much more than that.
It could.
Some of this is, some of this is like training a public works employee to be able to, when somebody, when you find that the storm drain connects to something different than what you thought it did, updating the mapping software. So that every time we do projects, we actually update, oh, the sewer line is here, the stormwater line is here.
We're, we're trying to put a budget together now, the $25,000 may not work, but we also have contingency, which we've used before to play with for some of this stuff. Now, is that going to be adequate?
Well, and maybe, maybe what you want to do, if there's a little bit of apprehension about adding much more to this line, is that, you know, we just, you know, we keep a really good watch of it. And if we need to come back to and ask for contingency to do some of this stuff.
We're spending. The issue is, what is the cost-benefit analysis of this increase in the budget? So is this, if we're going to train people to use more software and to automate more processes, are they going to be able to do more services or do more of the work we really want them to do? So to me, that, that's, that's what I'm interested in understanding.
I would say that, you know, for the most part, we have under-invested in GIS and mapping and that's really hamstrung our ability to do really good planning, both for infrastructure and land use. And they're tied together.
Okay.
And I'd say that stormwater is a really good example where we had really poor, and, and I don't think that that's done and it's going to be an ongoing process to keep updating that. Because, you know, they're going to be, we're just at the first step of trying to figure out what we have and where it is and mapping that out and capturing that data. The next step is actually using it to plan for the future. And that, and doing it in a geospatial basis is much better than, you know, kind of like a traditional, you know.
Institutional memory kind of thing.
No, I, so I, I understand the benefit. So the other thing is, is there a net service to Camden taxpayers?
Well, the, the service to them is that all of this data that we capture is made public. So, you know, if you live, wherever you live, you'll be able to access those layers to find out, okay, do I have a sewer line running near me? Do I have stormwater infrastructure? Do I have, you know?
So that contractors can look it up and they want to know, instead of having to call down, call and talk to somebody, they can look up and say, oh, there's an underground utility right here.
So I can tie in like a, you know, a lateral to that.
So what would be really useful for me next year at the Budget, Budget Committee is to understand how many users have actually used those services? Make sure that what.
It's, it's being used.
Is being used. Because if it's only for the planning office.
It's real estate agents, it's.
I want data.
She's just saying.
I'm just asking.
She's, she's suggesting we track the usage of this information. And I agree, there's two benefits of it in my mind. One is definitely the infrastructure, because note, most towns and cities today have infrastructure electronically monitored. So they know, by the way, they know how to, how to develop or repair budgets for the next three years because they can't repair it all at once. Versus the idea that says, when it's broke, I'll fix it. And that doesn't work. But to your point, and I agree, if we're automating the stuff, we should be able to track it and, and show. I, I think, Audrey, to this line item though, I think I understand you saying, you know, it's hard for me to believe that $12,000 is going to cover it at all. I think it should be some amount of increase here and then whatever else there is, we can cover through contingency or other matters. But I, I, if I felt comfortable with $12,000, I would say, okay, you know, stay with $12,000 by then.
Maybe a small, like a little bit of a mistake.
Well, it's also hard to tell, like, it's just, you know, because we're building sort of like a new program and system.
It's just known expenses.
Do you expect it to be at this level of $12,000? I'm not hearing that.
No.
Okay.
No, I do not.
I would be proposing 12.
So we shouldn't propose 12?
Yeah, we should propose more.
Again, because like not knowing exactly, because we've changed from, this was sort of the first year that we invested in.
But we'll be tracking that too, but going from 12 to 20 doesn't, it doesn't impact the.
No, I think we should go, Jody says that right now that line is at 24.
Correct.
So we should put 25.
It's fine.
What is the impact of increasing to 25 on the maintenance? Because we're going to have more. Because we're gonna have more stuff to maintain, and the maintenance line is already.
You'll have more information on what needs to be maintained. You can plan it out over the years.
I mean, maybe some of this should be in maintenance and technical services.
Exactly. So we, we have a $32,000 line on maintenance and technical service.
Yes.
As we're adding more software licensing, all those things, we, maintenance increases, you know, and training. So what is the impact of the?
I thought that was internet costs, maintenance.
I see what you're saying with the tech. So some of this actually that I'm referring to is the technical services associated. I was just thinking, you know, CAI is the, is the GIS company, but some of what we need from them is to create tutorials for volunteers to input data or for town staff to input data, things like that. So it, I don't know, maybe, maybe some of this added expense is more of a technical services added expense.
I just want to caution that maintenance as defined below and technical services is IT related.
My, my.
And infrastructure related. If you want to put it, expand what's description of maintenance technical services, you can do that.
My question is, by adding more licenses and softwares that we're using, are we all, should we, shouldn't we also be increasing the maintenance technical service line?
No, because a lot of the licensing agreements have.
Have the maintenance. Okay. So that jump already from 24 to 32 will cover.
Yes.
Okay. So, so then I'm okay adding 24. Sorry.
No, no problem. Two, two things. One, a statement, again, I'm talking to the general public. I think it's important that people realize, since I've been on the select board, we have been very aggressive in working on infrastructure. And this is interesting because it's both technical, as much as we're doing sidewalks and streets. And it's really important for people to understand how important that is to stay ahead of the game. And I think that's important. Second question I have, second question I have, or the first question I have, is there have been a lot of warnings and additional warnings lately about being prepared for hacking. How protected are we? How protected is our system from hacking?
Zero. It's Microsoft. It's a disaster.
Yeah, we do. Jason's pretty good.
Yeah, I mean, no, I didn't mean to say, yeah, like saying, no, they're, they are good about it to the point where.
We're not the worst out there. We're not the worst.
No. So the US government runs on Microsoft and, and they're hacked all the time. Microsoft is awful for that. The real question, if I can piggyback on you, is, does our insurance include ransomware?
Yeah.
So that's the question, my friend.
It does.
Okay. So then, then I'm happy.
Yeah, yes, it does.
Because then, then the insurance pays the ransom, we get our, we get our files back.
What I'd like to propose is that the 129.5 be increased by $13,000 by bringing count 3019 to 12 to 25.
Okay.
Thank you. I didn't even know I was making a motion. No, I, I did, I did. I'm so moved, so moved.
Finally got to the point where he's gonna.
Right. So moved. Allison seconded it. More discussion on this line item. So the 129.5 will be, Jody, help me with the addition, 142.5, correct? All those, all those in favor? Thank you. On to. Insurance is my favorite.
Do you want me to?
Yes.
Tell you about workers' comp and?
Not really, but go ahead.
How long are we gonna be here tonight? Or is this, I just, are we, how much, are we like an eighth of the way through?
No, we're about it.
Do we need to tell us?
20, 25% of the way.
Oh, okay.
We're going pretty, pretty good.
On expenses only, revenues excluded, that's a whole other discussion. But what you need to keep, this is, this is our night to get it done.
Yep, absolutely. So this includes all, all of.
That's why I have two drinks tonight.
We're on two drinks. All right, Audra.
We're ordering pizza. We're here till midnight.
I guess you want to describe the increases to workers' comp?
Sure. So, you know, if you look at sort of the town's loss runs, it looks like we don't really, it's, it's two years before the losses hit our budget and they're reflected in our premiums. And so what you're seeing here is largely driven by one incident. And that will be off within, I think, two years.
And then it will track back down again.
Yes. Yeah.
And unfortunately, that one incident, the snowball, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess. Any other comments on the other insurances before we get into discussion questions? Anything else?
That goes with that larger structural issue of the budget.
It, it does. It plays to this and maybe one other place in the, or two. And by the way, Audra, you mentioned this during the budget committee discussion very accurately. When asked about an account they weren't approving, which is a snowball, and we're not approving that here tonight either. But it seems to me that this large increase, part of this belongs in the snowball budget. They've got to track what that thing is costing us, to be honest about it. Not that, this is not about making them look black or red in the bottom lines. It's about being, it's being fair.
Transparent.
To, thank you. Mark, I love that word, to the taxpayers. This is, some portion of this is being dramatically driven by the snowball. And I.
I just want to add in there also, sorry, I, I might be delayed, and I'm sorry if I'm interrupting people.
It's okay. You're allowed.
Do allow a little bit coming from the, the snowball. We do, we put $10,000 in the snowball budget to contribute to the workers' comp, just as an FYI.
Yeah, I, I'm aware of that. I'm aware of that, but I don't, I don't see why it shouldn't be $50,000.
Right.
I, I agree, but just as showing that we, there is some small.
It's the thought that counts, though.
Yes, the thought. Not here, it doesn't.
And no, it was like, three of you were on the board when that started, like it used to be nothing, so.
Well, there were a couple of accounts.
It was like a baby step into that.
Well, and I think we need to take another baby step larger to, to reflect what this has really cost. For the two years only, apparently, it's gonna cost us extra because of this incident. It is one of our operations. It has some of the highest liability because injuries do occur. And to be honest to the taxpayers, I think a larger portion of this needs to go into the snowball budget.
Yeah.
So you're saying it's toddler step. We've moved up from the baby step.
Yeah, and also, just to be clear, when it comes to workers' comp insurance, we really only have one choice.
Oh, I get it.
We can never go back to MMA. They'll never take us again. We should never go there.
I don't question the amount or the supply or anything like that. You can bid it out, and it doesn't do anything.
Oh, and it's more, I know you all know this, it's more for the folks at home.
Thank you very much.
So, yeah, we've got one.
Not that, actually, that MMA will never take us.
Yeah, they kicked us off, MMA's group policy, because our premium was so high, because we had so many losses.
Right.
All snowball related?
But do we know, do we know the exact allocation to the snowball?
No, not really. Not really, because it's, you know, like translating like what the losses to the premium, that's difficult.
Well, I think we clearly, we went from, you know, 120,000 to a budget in FY '22, now to 153,000. So it's, it's a 28,000 dollar increase, which is.
But I mean, you know, there were some smaller, well, okay, so I don't, I'm not gonna get into any details. But when you look at the, there were some other claims, those tended to be like under $1,000. And then one that was like, I'm not gonna give you the number, but it was much more significant than $1,000. So, you know, it's, it's, you can't say 100% the snowball, but it is a big chunk of it from.
Yeah, and I agree, it's not 100%, but that, that kind of increase, again, it's, it's, this is, and you did mention it, Audra, and the budget committee, that this is an area where there's, the majority of this increase is caused by one incident.
And there are other factors, like, you know, when we expand our payroll and bring on new people, that increases our premiums as well.
Oh, sure. Oh, sure.
My question is that if I look at the snowball budget and it has a surplus, I need to discount that surplus by probably 20 or 30,000 dollars, right? They're not taking, we're not, we're not taking, so I'm trying to get a real picture of what, or even just the P and L of the snowball would be.
That's what, remember, the snowball won't be discussed tonight. It's a separate issue. But I'm, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that the, I think Jody said 10, she was all said $10,000 was a, Mark's words, was in the baby step, who was starting to crawl in charging the snowball, what they're, one of the highest liability operations we have in the town. That more of this money should be transferred to, reduced here tonight and transferred to the snowball. I'm not suggesting all of it. I'm just suggesting some piece. We need to be honest to the, to the residents. And this is about Mark's word, and I've used a lot, transparency. So I, you know, I think of the $153,000, probably, probably 15,000 more should be transferred to the snowball.
So put 25 total on the snowball?
Yeah.
10 plus, yeah.
It's, 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 it's not enough, but it's, you know, I'm not trying to hit somebody in the back of the head with a bat. I'm just trying to use a small stick. Allison.
It seems like, you know, we, different groups of us have different obsessions with trying to quantify the cost of various things. And that, then at some point, we also have to try to quantify how, you know, every time we, we are obsessed with quantifying one thing, how much added staff time that is, or how much complication that creates. And maybe just come up with, I don't know, like I, I feel like we chip away at these little things. Like each of us have our own pet things, maybe. And then if, and each of them sounds reasonable, but at some point, like town staff, you guys need to say, if you guys continue down this path, this is, you know, the overall impact, or this isn't sustainable for the budget, or this is a better way to approach this. Can, could we add in with the auditor every year or something to get, you know, an opinion of the cost to the town of the snowball? And then we keep, just sort of keep track of that somewhere, or, because one of the things that happened when we were, that we did try to correct is that the snowball was feeling this just intense pressure to try to save $800 here and $800 there, and they're closing the snowball because they thought they were gonna run out of money all the time. And we really pushed back against that and said, you know, sometimes it just isn't wise as a, you know, a business decision. We'd rather, you know, leave the snowball open, even if it means we do lose an extra $1,500. So I don't want to put us back in that situation where they're making decisions that are sort of a little short sighted.
Yeah. One other thing I'll add about that is we also have to remind people about the benefits to the town that the snowball brings in that are not financial to the town itself, but financially beneficial to the town businesses.
All right. Like we've all decided that we want to put money toward the snowball.
Yeah, it doesn't get talked about a lot, but that you always need to figure that in when you're looking at the costs for the snowball.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting any of this, again, it's transparency. And if somebody wants to sit here and tell me that the biggest part of this isn't because of the snowball, I'm, I'm waiting to listen.
And how much does it matter in the end? I just, and I'm not saying it doesn't. I just want to know how much complication it will add when we do this. Because like, I'm a little bit obsessed with understanding how costly it is to work with Rockport on the wastewater thing. But it's just, if you go through number of hours spent dealing with negotiating contracts and things like that, it's like, all this stuff adds up. So there's sometimes no end to it if you want to quantify, like which part of our insurance is the dams? Which part of it is, that was the thing I wanted to know for a while, which part is, you know, the fact that we pack 400 people in the Opera House and?
But the fact is, you set up a special project account to monitor the cost of the snowball. That's what it should do. Mark the cost of the snowball. If it was, if it was my own decision, I would make it a lot more than the number I recommended. But we need to show real costs and on the P and L of the snowball. And then it is, because they're not, they're not, your business.
We don't do that for wastewater. I mean, we don't charge any salaries for wastewater.
Wastewater is a totally separate budget, and maybe we should have a discussion about that one. Wastewater is the same special project as is the snowball.
We don't charge any staff time for that.
Well, then, one of the problems we have is, and is a very common one, is we don't have a time card system that allows a person to charge what they're doing that day, which is more extensive software to do that kind of thing.
That would be hell on earth for someone like me.
Not recommending it, Audra. Not recommending.
I didn't become a lawyer for a reason.
No, we just want to allocate what is reasonable to the snowball without overdoing it. And especially because it's, it's, the impact here is because of the snowball incident.
Yeah.
Then I'm gonna make a motion that we reduce the amount where the department head, town manager, and budget committee all agreed from 257,700 to 242,700, which, and move that $15,000 that we're taking out to the snowball budget.
I second.
For the discussion.
I mean, I think we just decided we weren't talking about the snowball tonight, though.
We're not. We're talking about this budget. We're taking $15,000 out of this budget. It will be transferred later through accounting to the snowball.
I think maybe a better way of doing it would be on the revenue side, not on the expense side.
Okay.
So having it reflected as revenue from.
Is it easier to just put?
Jody, are you nodding because you agree with me or?
What's easiest for you, Jody?
And then how do we make sure that that revenue line pays this expense line? This is the kind of stuff that I thought you guys hated. I mean.
It don't. It don't. It pets up.
Well, we don't want it, what we want is a true history of what we've paid in workers' comp premiums or any insurance premium. So we don't want to split it between, you know, the town's general fund line and the snowball line. So if instead you have it reflected on the revenue side, that, it just is a, it gives us a true history of what we've spent on that.
I like it.
And then the, yeah, the revenue can reflect that the snowball is paying their portion of that.
Listen to Jody, does that work for you, Jody, to have a revenue for workers' comp line and call it what it is? And that explains that we know that there's an income. We've done it with other issues with certain labor. I believe we have a revenue line for certain labor from the harbor. It's in the revenue line. So I think that's, it accomplishes the same thing.
Yeah.
Okay. Then I will adjust my, sorry, Jody, I cut you off, or did you mean to?
She said, yeah.
Okay. Then I will adjust the, the motion to go back to the original numbers from the department head, town manager, and budget committee of $257,700.
I second.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions, discretion, all those in favor? 4-0, good. Good, good call, Audra, by the way. That was a good, excellent point.
Well, I think Jody would have made it if I didn't.
She said she's delayed a little bit from the sound side, so on to the Opera House and Town Office Building account.
Also, I want to point out, I've been doing my best to monitor the Q and A, but we did miss one, Bob, from Jill Delano, the budget committee member. What is the split of time for assessor and assistant assessor Camden versus Rockport? Is their offer fair? And we sort of covered that, but.
Yeah, we did. And we.
I just wanted.
I thought we discussed that during the budget committee.
I know, but.
Well, I guess.
It was sort of getting to what I was asking, but I just want to acknowledge that.
Oh, thank you.
We forgot the.
So, thank you.
Q and A is, I need a little bit, I need everybody to help monitor that a little bit, maybe. Oh, here we go. And then, oh.
What?
Something from Beth.
Oh, okay.
We're gonna move on to the Opera House. Do we have Dave Morrison available? Does he want to come on or not? Doesn't have to. He doesn't have to. He provided a lot of information. I think we just need to discuss it.
Well, the, the next one is the, it's the actual town office building.
That's Opera House Town Office Building, right?
Yep.
Which is, again, looks like yours, Audra, was a couple thousand dollars higher than the department heads and the budget committee approved your recommendations. Beyond the salary increases, is there anything else we should be addressing here?
I think probably this is a broader discussion about like energy prices, because it's just so.
Crazy.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's a huge question mark.
Am I supposed to be bringing Dave Morrison on?
Ask Audra, she didn't say, yes, I just.
Well, I think, he's here. Questions for the Opera Town Office Building side of the budget?
I don't, but if anybody else does, that's fine with me, or anything else related to his email that he sent us, which was very well done in terms of summarizing information.
That was the other part.
I mean, I saw the energy cost was, was in the Siemens.
Let's wait until the other part, when, about operations.
Thank you, David.
Unless we have a specific question here that we want to bring Dave in. But Audra, just let's finish your spiel, then we'll decide whether we have to bring him on or not. But you're talking about the electric charges here. I don't see any, I have not seen any dramatic increases or guesses at electric charges. Is that your concern here?
Not just electricity, but heat.
Yeah.
Oh, that's oil.
I mean, and heat, we're kind of good because we are locked in with.
Siemens.
Heating fuel.
Yep.
Not, not Siemens heating fuel contract.
Right.
What is it, 280 Janus?
Per gallon.
281.
281 a gallon.
How long is that locked in? How long is that, when?
The end of this fiscal year.
Fiscal year is next fiscal year. But on July 1st, we're gonna have another contract with our oil supplier.
No, Janus meant the end of FY '22. No, Janus meant the end of FY '23.
Oh, oh, thank you. I'm sorry, Janus, I misunderstood. Okay.
Yeah, so...
So your point about energy.
It's, yeah, it's more electricity. And I think that instead of, I don't think going into each, you know, sort of budget line by line and trying to address it is a good way of doing it, but we might want to think of, you know, kind of plowing some money into one of our reserve accounts. We have like an energy efficiency reserve account and just putting, maybe putting a little extra in that just in case things get crazier than...
Energy efficiency reserve account?
Some kind of reserve.
For higher electric?
For any, well...
That was supposed to be for like doing things to use less energy, not to pay extra high...
I mean, you guys can choose what you're spending on, yeah.
Audra, we currently have a 70% of our electrical rates fixed for how long? With the, was it consolidated?
I'm sorry, I don't know off the top of my head.
I think it's November.
I think so, I think November's right.
And that's the wind energy credits we're getting with the consolidated, whatever the name is.
Yeah, the, um...
Right. So our, but that's for electrical supply, I'm sorry, electrical, the electron zone. Like it's not for the distribution, which we have to pay CMP, which is also going up dramatically.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think that the, that the, whatever, whatever philosophy we take towards heating HVAC or in terms of oil, gas, propane, electrical energy, it's not going to be cheaper in FY '23. It's going to get worse.
Mm-hmm.
And so when you put that in contingency, or you put it in someplace you want, we can put it... But that's where I get back to when last year, we had a long discussion about contingencies with the then budget committee and other people. And this is, this is where contingency plays. This is where it's so important, because these, we, bottom line, we don't know what inflation is going to do tomorrow. The odds of it going down are limited, in my opinion, maybe hope I'm wrong. But it's right now at 8%. That's, that's probably somewhat reflected here. In addition to that, we're going to, that part of that is escalation, which is much more than 8% of the energy sector. So, yeah, there needs to be some consideration in some account somewhere. I just don't know where that should be.
Yeah, I think it, we shouldn't try to pick away at individual ones, as long as it's something...
I, you can't, you can't, because you'd be absolutely guessing. But I think we should have an account someplace that's a recognition of that increased cost of energy. It's not going down.
Just stick with select board contingency and use that, rather than we create all these new accounts all the time, and then people forget what they're used for and then...
Yeah, no, we should make sure there's enough money in the...
When we get to select board contingency, that needs to be considered. But are there any questions about the Opera House as the office building?
But I was, I thought that the municipal buildings were solar powered. No, we...
We have, we have a solar farm that provides some electricity, and then we have a deal with Consolidated to give, to supply energy that is solar generated, I believe. But we don't have...
Some of it, wind mostly, the racks.
Yeah, basically, you're borrowing energy credits from Consolidated for, well, it was, I don't know, nine cents a kilowatt hour, I'm not sure what it is now. But it was in, for a year, and I think it's still in November. But after that, that rate's going to go up too. It's not going to go down. And that's only for the electrons, it doesn't cover the distribution.
No, I understand, I understand the production and distribution.
Because there is, go ahead, Mark.
I was just going to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion, we approve the amount from the town manager and budget committee, which are agreed at $100,000.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Not hearing any others with favor. Allison, slowly.
Yeah, I mean, that 28%, I guess we need another cleaning person, but I mean, I'm, that is what it is.
All right. Then on to the Opera House itself, in our auditorium, which we did have questions, and Dave did provide a great treatise on that, which is exactly what I wanted to see in terms of the, of the transparency. Mark, we keep talking, you used my word, but it's what it was all about. It was not trying to do anything besides make people understand, because I get questions all the time, about what does, certainly underestimate, overestimate income, or, and because officially, we said accounting, we have this, this line item of $317,500. That is somewhat reduced by income from rentals, as well as income from special, the special performances that we have. And that was the question. And Dave provided a good treatise on that to suggest that, well, in global, let's, let's stay away from 2021, because that's, you know, that's COVID year, and I'm sorry, that's not a measure of anything. But in general terms, the numbers that this would be reduced by because of revenues would probably be $15,000, $20,000 total.
Mm-hmm.
So basically, our $317,500 wonderful auditorium and Opera House is probably netting us a cost of about $300,000 a year. Mark.
A couple of things I can add about the Opera House. Number one, as Dave said in his letter, which I don't know if the public seen, the Opera House was one of the few venues in the state that stayed open and had shows all during COVID. And because of the government funding that we got from COVID months, they were able to upgrade the, the sound, a whole bunch of lights and stuff, equipment, so that did not cost the town anything, which is great. So the improvements in the Opera House have been spectacular. And then in addition, I want to mention, and overtime is a very low amount, it's $2,000. It used to be, before Dave took over as director, it used to be much higher because the employees were required to work nine to five and, and then had to do overtime when they had shows. And they've changed that so that if there's a show, they won't be here in the afternoon and they'll work the show. So we haven't had to hire additional people to do special services, and the overtime budget went way down. So that's improvement you won't see in these lines, but it's improvement over 10 years ago.
Right. Some of that overtime, I'm sure gets charged to productions also, I'm sure. But there was, I had question, honestly, as to where, I know we had a revenue line, we still do, which is for rentals. And that's very clear, and we'll get to that again in revenues. But I wasn't as clear, and I should have been, and Jody always straightens me out, there were a number of shows we put on, and those shows have certain costs and, and income from them, and they're special revenues, which are reported in our audit every year for, you know, the pluses and minuses for that year. But again, the total of the revenues from rentals and the residual revenue or losses from productions is probably $15,000 to $20,000 positive per year, something of that in magnitude.
Sometimes it's, it's been like $50,000.
It used to be more, but the last couple of years have been...
I saw, not for the last three years.
Yeah, the last couple of years because of COVID, it's way down. But it used to be, it used to be much higher. But, and I can say from working in the entertainment business, shows are not totally 100% back yet. There's still a lot of uncertainty around the country.
It's true, it's true. That's why I wanted, I went back to 2019 and 18 to take a look at what they were. And it was the same order of magnitude. Again, it's just making, in this town, we have, in many towns and cities, we have things that we love. Snowball, the Opera House, the library, there's a long list. And they're all, you know, everybody, but they need to understand that these things are not free. There's a cost to them. And that's, again, it's just being transparent, just so people understand what the costs are.
On the rentals, are we revising, are we including the price of electricity? And are we increasing the price of rentals this year? What are we doing for, how do we price rentals?
I don't believe we've addressed Opera House rental items.
I think we did the budget earlier, yeah.
Did we? I don't remember.
We did, it hasn't really changed since 2018. Losses and stuff.
Yeah, you know, that's a catch 22, you go too high, you don't get rented. But you're right, I don't think it's been evaluated by us a long time.
Yeah.
It would be interesting to see, like, to have a cost comparison. I mean, I know the Opera House of Camden is unique, so it's high too. But there are some, there are a lot of cultural venues on the mid-coast. It would be interesting to see.
I, I think we should evaluate, we talked earlier about certain fees, we're not charging for certain things. By the way, it's a long list, and they need to be increased or created in the first place. I think the Opera House remains in that area too, is to take an evaluation of when we get to the cost time soon, to the cost time of things.
I got to say, there's like no great way of doing it.
I don't think, I don't think comparisons work either. I think because it's, the venues are so different in so many ways.
Yeah, it's, it's a really tough thing to do, and I think that was a project that Dave took on, you know, when he first started in that position, because it was Dave's first year. And actually, it was my first year too, that we sort of looked at all the fees and tried to sort of come up with a new fee schedule. And the more you do it, the sort of, the more that you learn. It's just really difficult to come up with something that's, yeah.
I agree, I agree.
It's hard to keep, it's hard to keep increasing prices for rentals and stuff for, for number, is number one, we are so out of the, far away from the mainstream, we don't get a lot of the major acts that come through because they just don't, they don't tour, so we don't have the ability to book those people. And a lot of the, again, a lot of the entertainers and stuff have had a horrible couple of years. So this is the wrong time to say, hey, we're going to charge you more to, we want to sort of build our business back up and see how the world changes before we make any...
Yeah, I think the discussion about that would be in a different venue, but yeah, I think we have to have the discussion in any event.
And you know, a lot of the entertainers, it's, they're actually coming through here as Opera House productions and not actual rentals.
Right, right.
Which has different, entails different...
Special revenue line, right. Allison.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think we should probably have a conversation at some point about whether it makes sense to try to have this be an enterprise fund or a special revenue, whatever, or special, whatever we're calling it. I think a lot of...
Not just about, you're talking about special, just about productions you're talking about.
No, I mean, so, so there are a large number of people in the community that are under the impression that the Opera House is, is somehow similar to the snowball, in the sense that it's like a business that we're running. And I'm really not knowledgeable about productions and theaters and all that stuff. But a lot of people believe, it's because it's confusing when you look at our, our budget. And there's, we get into this conversation about fairness and, you know, the snowball's budget gets dissected, but then the, you know, how many people use the snowball versus the library and community benefit and all this stuff. We can all agree that all of these things have community benefit. But we should apply that same, I mean, I don't know that the average person understands how much money we're spending on the Opera House. It's clear to me that it's not something where we're going to be making a bunch of money off of it. It's not, everybody that who seems to know something about this industry says that we're not going to make a bunch of, we're not going to break even by just doing a better job marketing our rentals or charging the perfect fee or all this stuff. So we should probably decide that, okay, this is clearly a heavily subsidized thing for a community benefit and get away from really worrying all that much about what the rental fees are and figuring out how can it provide the greatest community benefit and what, I mean, I actually don't know what the average person in Camden would think about this subsidizing this to the, you know, $300,000 a year. This is, talk about creeping up. I mean, this is, that's, we're on track of potentially to be like another library. I don't know if that's sustainable in terms of, I just, I just don't know. But that seems like a high increase for...
So I, I agree with you. I mean, cultural institutions usually don't, are not profit-making. That's not their purpose. That's not why we set them up. It's, it drives traffic into Camden, it brings people over the weekend for SIF or whatever, great. However, I still think that we need to do our due diligence and to keep track of the rental prices around or if other institutions start increasing. I mean, it's not because we're subsidizing that suddenly we, we don't, we don't worry about the cost.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm just saying, where we can control is the stopping side.
No, but from a management perspective, it's interesting to me that we keep track of rentals and costs and things like that. Now, from a town perspective, I think the, the benefit of having the Opera House, of course, is, you cannot value it.
Right.
So...
So $300,000 that we put is what it is on your tax, it's like point 00.
No, the problem, the problem is, you're putting...
I know, but we just argued about GIS for like 10 minutes.
Yeah, you're putting $300,000 here. We have a wonderful snowball that does have cost in the budget of $154,000. It's buried in here, which is the debt service for the, that's not in the snowball budget. Then you add to that a very wonderful library. You can have all these things, but the only thing which I'm trying, I want to do is make sure people understand that these, and by the way, we can, we can sit and talk about it for many times about how the snowball and the Opera House brings people into town, and they spend money, and they're great, we're going to go tell that to the businesses so they can increase their contribution to funding the Opera House and the snowball. But, you know, that's facetious, of course. But it's transparency of people, this is where your tax dollar is going. It isn't all, we talk a lot about public works, we talk a lot about public safety. Those are more definable, and people can feel and see some of that. This is the stuff they can't feel and see. And I agree, Allison, I've had a number of people who have asked me lots of questions about, what does it cost us to have this wonderful facility? They're not suggesting we get rid of it. They're not suggesting we change it, they just want to know.
I completely agree. I mean, I'm not in disagreement with you, Bob.
I know, I know you're not.
This is, this is one thing you might want to think about, and this is an policy question about how much you do or don't spend on it. This is more of a accounting and a transparency in how you reflect it in our financial documents. And this is something, you know, Jody and I have talked about, you know, what's the best way to kind of set this up? Do we, you know, because we inherited this sort of way of budgeting for the Opera House, and things have evolved and things have changed, and I think COVID's changed them even more.
Yes, yes.
So this is sort of like a, you know, we're, we're inheriting this from an era when the Opera House didn't produce nearly as many or any shows.
Right.
It was primarily a rental venue and set up to be that. And there was much more of a focus on like getting as close to being cost neutral as possible. There were, you know, there were, they didn't produce shows, there were fewer staff, and it was mostly like, you know, maybe the Rockport Opera House, where they basically just took bookings.
Right.
So I guess, given that, you know, the Opera House has changed, it's much more of a, you know, production venue than a rental venue. Is it something that you want to set up as a special revenue account with the knowledge going in that, yeah, the town subsidizes it at $300,000 a year?
I think there's nothing...
And I guess to the subsidy side, and there is a, there is push and pull with this.
Oh, absolutely.
The way that our downtown Tiff was set up was very heavy on, you know, supporting and subsidizing the Opera House.
Yes.
We haven't really used, I mean, I've proposed to use some money to do that this year. Traditionally, it hasn't generated enough revenue in the past to justify that.
Correct.
That's an option, but it comes with a cost. And the cost is, it takes those funds away from other infrastructure projects that you might want to do.
Understood.
So I guess, but these are all just options I'm throwing out there. If, if this is sort of, you want to look at it a little bit differently, you want it to sit in a different place, these are all things that we can do, but it's kind of where it comes from and how you do it.
That's exactly where I come from. And when I say transparency, yes, this could become a special project, if I'm using the right vernacular, as is the snowball, it's a special project.
Special revenue.
A special revenue. Yes, it could be, because it's only fair to expose, we're not trying to kill the snowball. God forbid, that's, everybody in this town loves it. Everybody in town loves the Opera House. It's just making people understand when they say, where's my tax dollar going? And I can point to the accounting system and say, take a look, right now, it's a little confusing. And that's what happens when we have, honestly, right now, with the, it's confusing, was more confusing to me about a week ago, until Jody straightened, and Dave, thank you, Dave, straightened me out about, we have special revenue account for the productions. We have in the general fund, we have a revenue line for rentals, and I got to go all, check all those places. And I don't honestly see the special revenue account until I see the audit.
Right.
Right.
And that's not good to me. That's, I understand the accounting of it, I get it completely, but yeah, I think we should consider things like that, so that taxpayers know. This is all about where their tax dollars going.
And to redefine maybe what the, the goal is too, because initially, when the Opera House was invested, and a lot of the discussion was, it was a way of helping out the downtown businesses, bringing people into town to help the downtown businesses.
Yep.
Well, that, if that's the goal, that, you know, some of the decisions are going to be different than if the goal... you know, some of the decisions are going to be different than if the goal is just to, you know, provide the most widespread community benefit possible. Or there's there has been a history of the downtown businesses just, you know, you're trying to bring in people that have a bunch of people that have enough money to spend $50 on a ticket to go to the Opera House and then go to a fancy restaurant and because I mean, a lot of the time that it's too expensive to even go to the Opera House. So I don't know. I think that we should just clearly define what the goal is at some point. And I'm supportive. I feel like we always have to. I'm supportive of the Opera House. I think Dave does an awesome job. I think it's a great. I honestly like to have Dave and maybe some of the others doing a little bit for the like, maybe putting out some communications for the town too, because they have they do a better job. You can sign up for like Opera House updates in a more effective way than you can do that for the town. And so if we I'd like to take some of those skills maybe at some point and.
Right.
But anyway.
Just a matter of second, Mark, semantics. There's a difference between special revenue account and a special project. Isn't that correct, Jody?
Well, I only deal with the special revenues that.
What is what is what is the snowball?
The snowball is a special revenue, but it's a major fund. So it kind of sits outside of the chunk of special revenue accounts.
Thank you. Mark, you had your hand up.
A couple of things. One, I think people will be surprised there are very few tickets that cost $50 at the Opera House. And any of the events where tickets have been that expensive have sold out because they're special appearances. There's tremendous amount of town events. And if you look at the posters that Dave has, the productions, I don't think there has been a show this year that has not featured had been sponsored by some of the town businesses.
I mean, that's all. That's all great, but we need to be able to articulate what the goal is. And if I can't articulate it, then there are other people that can't articulate it either.
I just want people to understand that.
Yeah, this is this is got to do not no criticism of a library, of a of a snowball or of a, you know, of an Opera House. We're talking about reporting. This is only about reporting, not justification of an operation. That's all. That's all this comment is about.
Well, and this is good because I think, you know, for the past few years, Jody and I are like, okay, summer project. We're gonna we're gonna relook at we're gonna relook at this and kind of come back with a proposal. So.
I think we need.
It's been great. It's fall again.
Exactly. And and then all of a sudden, it's like January and we're doing the new budget and we've kind of forgotten about it. So.
Bottom line is, I think we should look. We should look at a special revenue account here. I think it makes sense. But with that, can I have a motion to accept?
Difference between a special revenue fund and a special revenue account?
Special revenue fund. What's the what's the correct terminology, Jody?
I I call I call well, it was called restricted accounts when I arrived.
Right.
Our officers did not like the sound of that. We have. Oh, my gosh, I have it. I have it up on my screen. We have probably 50 different what used to be called restricted accounts. They are special revenue accounts. For example, they're the harbor benches. Fire department donations, community events, Christmas by the sea. It's just.
Are those reserve funds too?
Add us for a reason and we have to account for it. And it has to have its own revenue and expense so that we can that little fund balance for each one at the end of each fiscal year.
Grants. That's how we have to deal with grants.
The discussion, discussion not for tonight, but another time is to look at this to be a special consideration of it being just like the snowball as an option.
Yes.
There are two. Yeah, really have two options, right? But anyway, Mark.
Hold on.
Then Mark asks his question first.
I was gonna make a motion. Department head, town manager and budget committee all recommend $317,500.
Right.
My second.
Motion made in second discussion.
And now, Audra, when you make recommendations, that's more like that's not like based on the town manager's philosophy of what everybody in Camden wants. It's more like this is the most reasonable and effective way to deliver the level of service that is consistent with what has been done. Or it's not like a value judgment or a.
Well, I mean, I don't want to say not at all completely because maybe a department head's like, I really need a new person. I want to increase the budget by 30% to add X, Y, and Z. And not not that any of you have really done that recently, but.
No, no.
You know, every once in a while that happens where they'll come and they'll ask for a position or a piece of equipment or to start up a new program or whatever the case may be. And if I don't think it aligns with other goals that we have, or there are competing goals where I think, okay, well, this needs to hold off from this year because it's not as important. Yeah, I'll make a value judgment, but I wouldn't say that, you know, where there's something where there's so clearly a history of investment by the town and, you know, you know, so many strategic planning documents and all this other information historically that I have to sort of look to to kind of figure out. Yeah, so I'm not going to make any radical changes to an area like the Opera House where that's sort of been what we've been marching towards for years. But that being said, I do think that given all of the evolution over the years, the impact of COVID, this is a good time for you guys to revisit those discussions.
I would agree.
And I don't think it's it's not a negative thing, or I think any anything anyone needs to sort of worry about making like a dramatic shift to cut anything. I think it's more about how you organize things, how you present things. Are there, you know, like, do you want to use the TIF for for this to any extent more aggressive? All of those sort of policy level discussions and questions that, you know, this is kind of the time to do it now that we've we've got, you know, a couple of years of information about how things might have changed behind us. So.
What we're seeing is a steady increase in staffing at the Opera House. And so that's my.
True. Three employees. There's a Opera House manager, a tech director and custodian, which who's split time's wage, and then a part time administrator have been that way forever. They haven't added any new people.
Again, getting into this.
Wouldn't say forever, but I mean, I would say that, you know.
I just heard at the budget committee that we're going from part time to full time custodian.
Well, that was because they were put at part time during COVID when we knew they were going to be closed.
Between the town office.
We have not always had an Opera House marketing person. I'm not necessarily saying that it's bad. I'm just saying we're unable to keep the public bathrooms. I know that if you ask people, do you want the public bathrooms open and functioning? Or do you like, we are spending more heavily in in one area and unable to meet certain things in another area. Or if there's some kind of restructuring that can happen where somebody can take care of everything, but.
At the very front end of this meeting, we talked about certain accounts that need to be restructured or have a discussion and a workshop or something to talk about that for the future. The labels of included in that discussion should be the pop recommendations of other options with regard to the Opera House's special revenue, whatever whatever Jody and Audra want to recommend. That should be part of that discussion as we go forward.
I mean, and and we're honestly going to give you, you know, maybe a couple of options of many that you could look at. So.
I agree. I agree.
It's, yeah. And and I say we. Sorry, Jody. It'll be mostly Jody.
For Jody, I know.
Start doing it now, but like, it'll primarily be Jody, just to be clear.
I'm very cognizant of the fact when you make accounting changes like this, they just don't you just don't push one button in your computer. It's a little more complicated. They take time. But with that, any more further discussion on the motion made in seconded? All's in favor? Or is it both? Thank you. On to the police department.
All right. So I guess the biggest change with this, so the police department is one of those departments where they and it's by virtue of the collective bargaining agreement expiring this year and it'll be the new one will be starting in FY '23. They're one of the departments that's getting across the board wage readjustment. And boy, was it needed because we were not keeping tracking even it was we were very far off pace with what was going on in the rest of the midcoast, the rest of the state. And I would say to some extent.
Yep.
What's happening everywhere else.
Now, why would that happen if the wouldn't the union be right on top of that? Why would? Why are we just finding that out?
Um, I think we knew it and the union knew it. But I think even our our union in Camden, I think that they they were they were very they were very conservative. Let's just put it that way. So I think that I think we would have fallen very far behind if we hadn't made the adjustments that we did.
These wage numbers reflect a future union agreement potential or is it just current union agreement?
So it's it's next three years. Yep, next three years. And the whole philosophy is it brings them more in line with, like I said before, our own stepping grade plan, as well as our year to year cost of living adjustments.
There was a discussion, and I don't remember where I had the discussion at some point. But what was happening, somebody from another department had actually said that they really like Camden because they train their officers so well. And then they're easy to steal because of the the price. And it's just the the training we get and and, you know, the way our department is run is exceptional. And yet we're losing people because we were not paying this kind of wages that people could get everywhere else. And to have somebody actually say that from another department, I think is just just not appropriate.
Again, to our to our revenue expense conundrum, is there is there a revenue line on this police side because of our Rockport activity of the chief?
I mean, yes.
Yeah, okay. Sophie.
They have other revenue too, don't they? I'm sorry.
That's okay. Next. Sophie, go ahead.
I remember the budget committee discussion last year, I think, and there was they were looking at buying another cruiser, but I don't see it here.
That's in the CIP. It's, yeah, it's in the CIP.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any comments, questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion, and it's agreed from department head, town manager and budget committee at the same figure, $1,446,550.
My second.
Made in second discussion.
We the animal control. I'm sorry.
No, you're right. You're right. We do need to have a policy discussion about that.
Yeah.
I don't. I am hesitant to increase the cost of that.
At this point.
I don't because I don't know that I don't really support maybe an increased cost, but I don't. I'm wondering what the mechanism mechanism is to stop the town from overspending.
You're absolutely right. We need to have a policy discussion about this because there have just been some I don't know how to describe it other than absolutely bonkers or bananas things that have been happening lately with
I know I've heard of.
Animal control related issues.
All right. Another one on the list.
I mean, some of that stuff is great for a select board meeting just to it's a it's a very interesting.
It's a good point, Allison. Absolutely. We need to talk about it.
I think some of these things should be on your agenda.
Yeah, they will. After we get past the hump of the budget.
Increase viewership.
Real names of the the entities involved because they're dogs.
Not a problem. Well, I'm making a list and checking it twice. And the animal control session is on it.
I'd love to be educated on this. Yeah, Brad, would that connect also? Where's where's the pause contract in? Is that in the police budget?
Um, yes.
Is?
Well, it's a very interesting little side situation that you don't.
Animal control. So 3018.
Yep. Second, second to last one.
So how much of that is that all the pause contract, that $7,000? Or is that contract?
Um, I I believe the contract is is around 6,700, I believe, or.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. You said mine was close to $7,000.
That so it's that whole contract that we would want to look at?
It is pause. Yeah.
Associated policies.
Right, correct.
And roles and responsibilities.
Yep. All right, yes. The answer to your question is yes. With that, any other discussion? All's in favor? One, two, three, four, zero. Thank you. On to our fire department. Is that next? Yeah, fire and rescue department.
I have, well, public safety, county dispatch.
I'm sorry, I jumped into past county dispatch.
I wish this was an assessment, not a.
I agree.
I wish it was an assessment.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we can't discuss. We don't.
Nothing we can do.
Well, you know what? Sometimes you have to resist just for the sake of it. But I don't like the system. I would gladly pay to go back to the way things were.
Yep.
Where I could call and talk to somebody and you could go down to the station and talk to somebody there. I don't like I'm and I know that they're wonderful people working at dispatch and it's not their fault and they go through a lot and all of that stuff, but it's just people don't want to call that number for various reasons. And I just I would I wish we could come up with a better solution. It was better when it was local.
I think we all agree, but we're in a sense stuck with it.
Well, we could have paid like $400,000 to keep it going ourselves.
There you go. There you go.
But, you know, one just quick message is that we do pay a lot for it. And this is what Randy always tells me when I say, what's the proper way to handle this or that? And he says, you should call dispatch. And it's even for things like sidewalk parking, especially for things like sidewalk parking. They really are like we pay for the service of them directing calls to the right place. And so it's okay to call dispatch, to call I call 2363030 because that's what I still remember. But that I don't know if.
I have to give you the number. I don't have it.
I don't know.
But it's you should we should because we are paying for it, we should use it. And also, when they when they log all of the complaints that they get, that only really happens if it goes through dispatch. And so it's great to be able to, you know, text or email Randy or complain to Audra about something or but I find a lot of the time if I want to just, you know, I used to like text out and be like, another car is parked on the sidewalk. But now I just call dispatch and that's I think I might be the only one that does that, but.
Yeah, I certainly haven't.
That's what Randy says we, you know, we should we should do. So we should make use of the service.
I don't have.
Sorry.
I was gonna say, I don't have a sidewalk, so I have nobody.
It is our job to to notice that.
Does dispatch give us like a a report every year?
Yes, and we should look at it more.
We should look at that.
Randy puts it references it sometimes.
But I agree that it should be an assessment. Can we move it to an assessment?
Tell me if I say something wrong, Chris.
Let's let's.
On this topic.
Motion.
Okay, I'll make I'll make a motion that.
The county commissioners are giving a monthly report. Is there a way to get on that list, I wonder?
Yeah.
It's a public report.
Well, they don't. The problem is they don't publish any of their agenda packets.
So you don't know what's coming.
All they publish are their agendas. You can't see any of that information.
Well, we could ask for it.
Can we assign somebody to make a comment about that?
I already made a comment about that.
Mark, go ahead.
I make a motion that we approve the amount that department head, town manager and budget committee agreed on, $163,205.
My second.
Motion made in seconded for a discussion.
I recommend we move this to an assessment.
We.
Kind of an assessment?
It is an assessment, so we shouldn't be voting on this.
I see what you're saying.
An assessment is we're just assess for because we can't negotiate.
Chris, is this a hangover?
We should have it as an assessment.
Just is this a hangover from when we had our own dispatch service and it sat in our budget? It predates you. Yeah.
Yeah, I think we could.
I think it's good to force us to talk about it every so often.
Yeah, I think.
No, but we should. We could review the assessments at the end of the budget committee, but discussing it when we cannot change the amount is kind of a waste of time.
It's a waste of time like like Knox County. Yeah, right. Jody, is that a difficult thing to change going forward?
Have an assessment section?
Get an assessment?
Yeah.
Nope.
Nope. Okay, well, let's.
Make it more clear, but we should still talk about it because you can't refuse to pay and then have a legal battle and.
Yeah, but anyway.
I would like.
Disturb you interests of the county.
Along with the fire, maybe the fire hydrants should be in that same category.
At the moment, we have a motion made in seconded to accept this as a county dispatch budget.
I'd like to have.
All those in favor? Four, zero. Now to the police department and fire department. Fire, fire, fire. Fire department. Again, let's see, we have.
I think it's called public, well, I don't know.
Fire and Rescue. The department head, town manager and budget committee all approved the same amount. The questions that we have for Audra or the chief. Besides the fact it's difficult to maintain staff and stay alive in this marketplace. Go ahead, Allison.
So with the whole code enforcement thing, how is that reflected in the budget?
It isn't.
It's just.
Yeah, it isn't.
Transparent response.
Well, remember I said earlier about the our current payroll system, and I'm not suggesting we change it, doesn't have the allocation of a person putting on their time card what they're doing versus the department they're in.
But we that's never stopped us from dividing things up.
No, you can do that, but I think that's that's just an activity that'll have to happen if Audra wants to.
We've got our fire department helping people like build new houses, basically. Like with kitchen renovations. I mean, I had members of the fire department at my house because I wanted. I mean, I had members of the fire department at my house because I wanted to expand the, I forget what we were doing, but they were there, and.
Code enforcement.
Yeah, but that's where, I mean, our, I feel like this building boom, everything that people want to do to their houses is just taking over the town. I think it's a great idea for the fire department to be able, I mean, I don't, I think the people that have decided that probably evaluated it well, but we should be, there should be some kind of re, reflection of the fact that we have.
Well, and this one is further complicated by the fact that, like, a lot of, it isn't just building code, it's also life safety inspections that they do when they're.
For the businesses.
No, even in, even when they go and do, you know, residential work as well.
But they only go there for, yeah, they go, they do lots of things, and.
Yep.
I guess, just, just to Bob's point about it's hard to parse out, and that makes it even more complicated, because they're doing two things at once sometimes.
Right.
They are doing a lot, they're definitely spending a fair amount of time not, I don't know, in the typical thing that you would think of, like, I want the fire department to be able to do this, or rescue people, or this or that, and then, you know, I've got Andrew Lowe at my house, like, telling me how to put the electrical box in, right? And that's, I'm not saying that's, doesn't make sense, but we should be charging, I feel like the fee that I pay for that.
Again, you're covering two issues. You're covering the reimbursement by the town, I agree, the fees should always be evaluated for that, but one of the differences between, say, a fire doing codes and our county, if we were to charge some of that time to planning, for example.
Right.
Then it doesn't change a dollar of what the taxpayers are paying for, they just need to, versus what I usually climb on heavily is when we're, we're switching between accounts, between a general fund and special revenue.
And that's the thing, these are all general fund expenses.
That's right.
I guess, but to Allison's point.
But fees, we need to have that in our mind. It was very hard, I tried to increase lots of fees this last time, and it was like, oh no, you can't really do this, but I think we're not, we don't have a full awareness of the cost of all of these projects that people.
And there's no way you're going to track that unless you get into a time system, my, my experience, that allocates person's hour is what they're working on, not what their cost center is. That's a big difference in accounting.
I think you can estimate a little bit, just like we do, it's not going to be better for Steve Pixley to log every hour, I'm talking about the harbor now, I'm talking about the snowball, and then do that.
Who's going to record all this time? Who's going to spend all this overhead to record?
We have to estimate, everything we do is estimating. We estimate how much time Bill Kelly spends on wastewater, and we put $4,000 of legal services there. We do lots of estimating how much time is spent on this versus how much time is spent on that. Parks and Rec.
Yeah, but I draw the distinction between what's in general fund and what's not. Wastewater and snowball are not in the general fund, and that's where I, my mission continues to be, correct allocation of something in those accounts. By allocating something, which we could do, but it would be, in my opinion, a wild ass guess, but from the fire department for doing code to planning, yeah, you can do that, there's no reason why you can't do it, I just don't think it's worth it. Now, fees, I agree with you.
The only way it would be worth it is if you truly want to move to a system where the fees that you charge for.
Are reflected.
Building permits.
Or actual costs. I agree.
Right, that's.
We do, because how else are we going to pay for the high-level planning that we want to do? We're so busy processing peer applications that we can't plan for sea level rise. That's just one example, but.
It's the same money coming in.
Yeah, it is.
But we need to be able to fund positions, our high-level planning positions are getting cannibalized by individual projects, and so we need, that's fine, we want the individual projects to be able to continue, but we need those projects to fund the increased planning that is needed.
Yeah, I think that's a noble objective, I just think that the cost to do that is not free, you either have to change your payroll system, or you have to change your manager's responsibility or formal work to fill out, I spent two hours investigating Allison's kitchen.
Or we can just task town staff with doing a more thorough job of having fees reflect closer to the true cost, and have it sort of a broader.
But then you have to record true costs, and that takes time.
Well, and then, okay, so how stringent do you want to be about this? So, for example, Janice does a lot of licensing.
Yep.
Not even close, the license fees that we charge for that stuff, not even remotely close to what it costs her to do that.
Correct, understood.
Not even.
And qualitatively, qualitatively, we can increase the cost because we have a perception of time and an idea, but we don't have it quantified.
Well, and one of the reasons that we, that we do it is, so what do you want to, I guess, what do you want to be strict about, like, what do you want to stick to? Because, you know, there are some businesses that they would be, they would complain bitterly if we increased those fees to reflect the true cost.
Yeah, I understand, understood.
And we've been, as a town, we generally have ended up doing what the most vocal ask us to do, or complain about, but we, things like, you know, Genesis' time is extremely valuable.
Sure.
Because she's one of the most knowledgeable people in the town, and so what would be, I think there are a lot of residents.
Like a $30 lodging license.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not even.
I'd rather Janice be writing up recommendations for her zoning ordinances we should, or ordinances we should eliminate, or doing a town newsletter. A newsletter is a perfect example of something that has been sort of unattainable by the town for a long time, that many residents have asked for, but we end up doing other things. And so I'm not saying I want to make, it's, it does get really annoying to do all this, like, time card accounting stuff, but how else can we make sure that town, we have the resources that we need to work on broader goals, and not just.
And we have to rely.
People moving here that want to remodel their kitchen and do their landscaping and all, that's just taking up so much time.
Absolutely is, but I would put the charge, Audra, if you, do you want to recommend to us what system you're going to put, informal or formal, to track the time these people are spending on individual efforts?
That's not really what I'm, or are we just.
I'm sorry.
Fund the other positions at the level that they should be, you know?
I'm sorry, but we're talking about, you know, allocation of time and expenses to a task. Qualitatively, it can be, I think it was three hours, or quantitatively, I'm writing down three hours. That's the only way you can track it.
I mean, we're just, I'm just talking about, if, why are we even doing this budgeting at all, where we put things in categories, if we're going to say, well, it doesn't really matter because the taxpayers are paying for it all? Why does it matter if the, we can have Dave Morris and mow lawns and call that.
Right.
You know, it's, we want to keep it, there's an idea of having actual departments.
I totally agree with that.
I'm curious, how much time is the fire department spending on codes and planning?
You have any idea, chief, how much time is spent?
I mean, I couldn't tell you off the head, off the top of my head, but we do track it, yes.
Do track it.
Is it like, a couple people are spending a quarter of their time, or is it less?
So if you, if you track it, let's get the number, and let's, and let's have a real conversation with data.
Yeah.
And try to crack that nut. I mean, I think the issue is either we charge a token fee that will contribute somewhat to our expenses.
Yep.
Or we charge for the true cost, and we don't have the basis for the true cost.
That's right, the mongrels don't work.
If you have the data and you, and.
I mean, we've got, Brad, I don't have a.
Oh, do you turn your.
No, and I'm not asking you off your, off the top of.
Sometimes it's a good story for the fire department, too, that, like, we're also doing this, you know?
I'm also the public health officer, and when Sophie took the position, she, there's an issue in her neighborhood, and she wanted to know what was going on, and I was able to tell her, I spent 80 hours over the course of this many months, mediating this issue. So, I mean, we, I, I wouldn't be able to give you an exact.
That's fine.
But we could come up with a ballpark figure.
Yeah.
Because we track it in the daily log every day.
I think, I think that is one element, we could certainly have the data and take a look at, but there are many other elements, like, how much Genesis' time, do we have an idea how much Genesis' time is spent on licensing or permitting?
I bet she could give you a pretty accurate estimate, so.
When you're talking about the vitulers and the lodging licenses, those are set by ordinance.
The fee.
In the ordinance that we charge, so if you want to change those fees, you need to change the ordinance.
Which is just, that's, the system is so designed to make these difficult.
I, I think it's, I think we can, go ahead, Mark.
I, one comment to make about it. We can micro look at these things, but there also is, how much for this fee, how much for that fee, how much, but there also is the fact that the, the people and the citizens of this town are paying taxes for these services, and so we don't have to charge them the full price of what's happening, because they're also paying for it in their taxes, and we have to be aware of that as well.
Very small percentage of people that are using.
So I think, I think this is a bigger conversation.
No question.
That requires a workshop, but wherever we can get data, I think it's a good idea to get data.
Absolutely.
Or, or good guess estimate, like you have, Chris.
When we're discussing certain fees, do we have the prerogative to change versus those that take a town vote, and orders is some of those, too? But, but we could certainly look at, and when we review, when we review fees and costs per permits and stuff like that, it would be helpful to have some data, because my experience to data on the select board is, well, we've been charging $50 here for the last 10 years, so let's keep charging.
Look at what the other towns are doing, and.
So I think you're at the point, I agree with Allison, that we should have, and if there is any kind of data, including a rough guesstimate that, you know, Genesis is spending so many hours, or fire department's spending X hours, you know, on code enforcement, that relates to permits, of course, but it's going to be, it's not, I, what I would plan, should have against a, write down a time card for how many hours for Charlie's house on Main Street, that's, no, that's what you're saying.
I think that's going to be cost consuming.
Right.
Way, way cost consuming, the cost benefit's not there.
Yeah, but I'm also thinking, you know, that depending on the, we could look at, you know, the size of the renovation in terms of the budgets of renovations, because they.
Yeah.
And make our, and do ourselves a favor and just have trenches, or something that does not create more work.
Yep.
And that produces a little bit of revenue.
I agree.
To cover those costs, because, yes, we're all taxpayers, but, but no, but, Mark, Mark.
Go ahead.
I renovated my house when I moved here five years ago. I'm not going to do that again for the next 35 million years.
Understand, but you, you have to look at the whole town that way. So, yes, you paid a cheaper amount for your, your license to renovate your house.
For me.
But let's say, I went to the opera house, so, you know, a lot of, maybe the other people in this town didn't go to the opera house, so part of my taxes paid for that. And what about, say, Sam and Mary, making up a couple?
Yep.
They had a fire, and so they had a fire truck come to their house.
Yep.
And so on, so it needed a police service. So are we going to nickel and dime people for every little thing we do?
No, no, no.
Well, but that's, how do you choose which one is?
Essential services, and, like, there's a big difference between a fire truck being able to show up at your house and being able to, for some homes on Chestnut Street, which have their kitchens ripped out, like, every three years, every time the owners change. I mean, there are things that we want to subsidize as a town and things that we don't. I want that, you know, when people don't have smoke detectors, and there's so much stuff that the fire department does that we'd never want to nickel and dime people for, but there are places where, this is a very, very popular place, Camden, it has been discovered, people want to move here, they move here for a little bit, they turn property over, it's, and a lot of the time, these properties are an investment. You're renovating something, so you can turn it over quickly for an Airbnb, and no, do I want the fire department or the town to subsidize that? No, I want to get every bit of revenue out of that that I can, so that we can use it to do better planning.
We're going to have to terminate, this is a conversation, and I agree with it all, but I think what the bottom line of it is, we really want to focus on, especially the fee thing, and some input and data, so that we can chew on it more than, we've always been paying $50 for the permit.
Right, right, yeah, that sort of.
Marco.
Okay, is there any, Chris, is there anything you want to say about your budget? We haven't even gotten your budget yet.
No, he's happy.
And the, and the increases, again, wages and the same.
Yes.
Cost of living adjustment.
Yeah, they're not union.
Okay, then I will make a motion that we approve the budget, and town manager, department head, and budget committee all agreed on $661,700.
My second.
Motion made the second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Thanks, Chris, thank you very much.
Thank you.
4-0. Onto the public safety building.
Do you have his presentation?
Which is principally, Audra, principally.
I think we're going to put them all on the website.
Audra, the public safety building is principally associated with the maintenance of the building?
Yes.
Yeah. And reflects maintenance contracts we currently have?
Maintenance contracts, all of the normal expenses of running a building, like, you know, heat, electricity, other supplies.
And I have one question for Chris. Since we've made, Siemens did, came in and did the work for your heat, air conditioning and stuff, how is, how is the building these days? Is it all fixed? Is it working?
Yes, everything that Siemens installed.
Is there anything in budget?
The space is all about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, then I'll make a motion that we approve the public safety building amount. Department head, town manager, and budget committee all agreed on $49,385.
My second.
Motion made the second, discussion? Favor. Little line item down here from one of my favorites.
Sure, it's massive, little.
I know, that's one, that's one of my favorites, because it's not, which is the hydrant assessment, for the public's benefit, again, for the 50,000th time, Audra, could you explain to everybody what this is?
So this is the line that allows us to have a system of fire hydrants across the town, that the town can access for fire suppression purposes.
It's our current way of funding it.
It's funding, it's the, what, monthly, yearly charge per hydrant that we're being charged for, the number of hydrants we have.
How many hydrants do we have?
More than one.
No, I know, because I know.
Just your E or something.
Yeah, I think it is, something like that.
There are roughly 120, some of them are, some of them are required in the planning process, so they're paid for by homeowners.
Right. Oh, really? I didn't know that.
I was just trying to figure out what $21,000 buys me, so the maintenance on, on a monthly basis of $90,000.
Basically, basically.
It's $20 a hydrant per month.
Question?
Thank you.
But there's also a correlation with their home insurance.
Right.
But there's a benefit, for sure. Well, but there's a benefit, for sure.
In hydrant district, you pay a lower homeowner's payment than for the written hydrant district.
Right.
I didn't know, thank you.
Isn't, isn't that assuming, Mark, just we're quick, the testing is when they come out and open the thing up and run the water for a while and.
A lot of that is for their own benefit.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Because they are required, so they're, they're saying that that's for us, but they need those hydrants in a lot of cases as much as we do because they have to flush their system.
They do.
So.
Mark, you have a question?
Two questions. Number one, I noticed the department head numbers different from town manager and budget committee by, what, $5,000?
That looks like it.
Yeah, so that was one of the circumstances where I got additional information after the fact.
We should go with.
And second question, Chris, we have a, a new fire truck coming to town, which will be, help us in places where we don't have fire hydrants. Do we have a delivery time on the new truck?
It is in production, I'm told, for summer.
Great, great, very excited about that.
Motion, go ahead, Mark.
She's got a question.
Who, also, somebody have a question?
So, I think it's important that everybody understands too that the, we have a private water company here that is extraordinarily profitable. It's owned by the San Jose Water Company, which owns the Connecticut Water Company, which owns the Maine Water Company, they're a very profitable entity. I got a notice in the mail the other day that they're going to be increasing our rates again, and the way that they do that, basically, they have a guaranteed return on their investment. So as long as they can show, this is the same way the electric utilities work too, as long as they can show that they've invested a certain amount in the infrastructure, then they get to raise rates to the level that allows them to have, you know, a certain return for shareholders.
Pay exorbitant rates to their shareholders.
Exactly, and so in a different way, you know, it, it drives them to want to invest, not necessarily always to invest in the most efficient thing. CMP is constantly being accused of sort of overbuilding certain aspect of, aspects of the system. So the water company, I don't think is anywhere near sort of the level of indignation we should feel as, as with CMP, but there is, so they're raising rates, and that includes an increase in the hydrant assessments. They don't do, even the cable company gives a different rate to municipalities, so they're not doing anything like that. There is an opportunity to comment on this, and I think it would be worth it for the town, maybe just to.
Isn't this regulated by the PUC?
Yes, and they ask for, you know, they solicit comments.
So it's probably coming.
And my question would be, in my experience with both PUCs, they don't ask the right questions of the utility to make a determined, a good determination of what you just described, which I agree happens all the time.
Right, and it would be good for us every so often to say, okay, well, how did you decide to, to invest here?
Exactly.
How did you decide? Because, you know, all of a sudden they'll say, we need to close down Free Street, because, and it'll be like, you know, not just an example, but a big rush to be able to do a project. And, you know, sometimes I, I'd like to be able to see that that's not just geared toward making sure that they can show that they've invested $10 million in a certain area by the end of a certain quarter, by the end of, and that's not to say that they are doing this, but we should be, it's our job to keep them honest a little bit.
Well, it's our job to keep the PUC honest.
Well, we do that too.
Well, that's huge, because that's where it all starts and stops, and the, the discussion about whether utilities are taking advantage or not goes right through that organization. It's a state organization, and I see no criticism happening with that organization. So I agree with both, need to be, need to be, get feedback as to what they're doing and why they're not controlling. They have control of that.
Maybe an audit of the, you know, I'd like, of the fire hydrants, just to be, I'd like to be able to see that they are correctly.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, assessing, these are the private ones, these are this.
I agree, I agree. But with that, we have a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion that we approve the amount from the town manager and budget committee of $263,890.
A second.
Motion made in second for discussion, other than the good one we've already had, which was a good one, by the way. All those in favor? Opposed?
So this actually incorporates the bud, the increase that is under review?
The what?
Yes.
Yeah. Yep, so three to one, motion carries. Emergency Medical Services, EMS, another acronym, Sophie. This, this is, obviously, Audra, this is for.
I have a choice for you here, too.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So if you go down to.
Which?
The EMS contract line, which is the two.
Which is the?
Eight oh five.
The 175-5.
Yep. I have more accurate numbers because when the splits were calculated based on the new census.
Yep.
Data.
Yep.
Even though we've gained population, all of our neighbors that are part of this group have as well, so it looks like our share of the contract is closer to 160,000. So you could.
From the 175-5 to 160?
Mm-hmm. So that is something you could do.
Remind we do that?
The question is how Safe is doing that. Worst thing you would want to do is save $15,000 and then you find out you get hit in the back of the head with something. Is this a 100%?
I mean, I don't think, I don't think it's like a die on a hill one way or the other.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we have to wait for the, is Northeast Amulets contacted the other three towns?
Yeah, this was in an email between all the towns about like, this is the increased cost and this would be the subsidy split between all of you.
You know, if you, if we want to take it down, I mean, 10 to 15,000, it's not rocket science, that's not huge.
Yeah, I mean, it's not going to make a big difference one way or the other.
I don't know if it's a board decision, I, I wouldn't touch it, it's not big enough to worry about.
Is there a revenue line with EMS?
No.
No.
Because that goes to Northeast.
Right.
They get the revenue.
Right. But it's up to the board, if you want to change it to something less, it's just, it's just to me, to me to be.
Okay, if we're not sure and if we don't know how the other towns are going to react to it.
At this point.
I'll make a motion, we approve the town manager and budget committee's numbers of $175,500.
Oh, wait, you might want to do the whole.
Oh, sorry, 216, 216,0310, I was looking at the wrong line.
My second.
Discussion? All in favor? Four zero, thank you, and on to, well, do we have much, Emergency Operations Center, $500?
I think this one is so funny that.
I think it's beyond funny.
Why is, why do we have that?
Because the fire station's in the flood zone.
Right.
Yeah, it has to be in the congressional.
Assessment, right?
Yeah, there you go.
I don't know even about assessment, I just feel like it's so small it could be absorbed into someone's, as a line in someone's budget.
Yeah, you could sneeze and cover it.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we approve the Emergency Operations Center amount, that the department head, town manager, and budget committee all agree at $500.
My second.
Could we renegotiate that to include some parking space? Does that include, does our contract include any parking?
Oh, this is, it's not like a contract with the cargo church.
I was kind of being facetious, but.
I thought so. All those in favor?
You, I'll send you in as the lead negotiator.
Streetlights, we have streetlights.
All right, can I make a?
Yeah.
Comment about the streetlight?
Yeah, sure.
It's really nice to see the results of the LED transfer, transfer to LED lights in terms of electricity, if I'm reading that correctly. Actual, 2019 was 52,283, and our budget this year is $10,000, and that's.
Just to be very clear, it's not electricity, that's the leasing, not leasing from CMP.
Yeah, it's not electricity.
There's, there's electricity before.
Not that that's confusing.
We, we.
Change that name.
We should change the name.
Well, well, it's, no, now it's electricity, just in the past it wasn't.
Right.
In the past it was.
Have the same, we should have created a new line rather than a.
That's correct.
But you cannot.
That's correct.
Yeah, I mean, what's done is done.
$28,000.
But it's still, it's strong savings.
Well, it tells a good story.
It does.
Anyway.
What, so where's it going up?
What's going up?
Why's it going up?
Why's it going up?
Downtown streetlights.
Oh.
Yeah, it's really, what went up is the, the signal line has gone up from.
Oh.
1,000 to 3,000, the traffic signal maintenance. Traffic signal? Are you talking about?
Was that in the public works?
Is traffic signals?
Two traffic signals.
I was going to say the two whoppers we have.
Okay, okay, that's fine, I, I second.
We have three.
Second.
Made the motion yet?
Has made the motion yet.
The motion for total streetlights, take, using the town manager and budget committee's amount of $28,000.
My second.
Motion made in second, discussion.
Guess, read of the traffic signal, put a roundabout.
There you go. All, all those in favor? Four zero, thank you.
Aggressive statement right there, that's.
Public works, Audra.
Controversial.
Public works.
So public works.
Which has only gone up four and a half percent to the numbers that were department head, town manager, and, and budget committee the same.
Yes, so really no notable changes.
I'll make.
I don't see anything big except for, no, I don't, I know about.
Y'all know we don't want anything to change, so.
No, no.
Tand sand is the only one.
Yeah, well, there's, there is the issue of, what's gone up is, a little bit is, is the, what did I just saw? But this one, I, I, it wasn't huge. The, no, actually, not much at all.
Salt shortage?
Yeah, it's going to get worse.
It's coming from this year, from Morocco.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
That seems insane.
Being mined in Morocco.
I know, I know.
And I was expecting you, Allison, to say, have you seen the amount of sand and salt that is still on the streets of the town?
I think the streets sweeping kind of early this year.
They did, they did.
Which is nicer because then it doesn't, not so much that washes in the storm.
The storm.
You don't get the dust thing too.
And into my driveway.
Right.
If you live on the downside of the street, it all ends up in your driveway and your lawn.
Go to salt only and.
If there are no questions.
Actually, we probably should.
If there are no questions to Dave's in budget, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget agreed on by the, from the department head, town manager, and budget committee to the amount of $1,227,244.
My second.
Motion made in second, any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Allison.
Sorry, I was just looking at the fuel depot maintenance for a second, I'm, I'm in favor.
Four zero, thank you. Streets, highways, bridges, and sidewalks and public works, which, which again is.
It's confusing, why is that separate?
Yeah, I, I.
Because, because.
Separate.
Because it is not funded by the same line.
No, because it's not funded by the same line.
Well, I guess.
There's a tiff there, right?
Well, no.
Because it's not included in the public works budget, that's the bottom line. It's, it's, it's a separate budget for maintaining and storm sewers, is exactly all the stuff that's listed, culvert basins, and this infrastructure, which is not in the basic budget for the.
Yeah, all I can do is speculate that at one point.
Let's combine them.
Yeah, at one point they wanted to show them separately. One is like the sort of operations and maintenance, labor, materials.
Yeah.
All the expenses with the, you know, the, the public works facility itself, and then this is all the sort of like.
Maintenance, yep.
Maintenance and.
And to that question, Audra, as I recall, on the, on the budget, on the ballot, public works is one line.
We, we guess.
So they are combined on, on the ballot.
On the ballot.
Not here.
So. They're connected, whether, the, having people to do these things and, Sophie has a real base.
So the reason why I, I personally would like to keep it separate is because if we go ahead with having a management parking system, revenues from the management, from the parking would be allocated to street, inside work, maintenance.
As opposed to?
Well, you, you could see, so we could show the impact.
Well, it would be a revenue line, and that would be in a different account, but it would, it would apply to some of the maintenance, some, yeah, because the maintenance line may go up.
Right, exactly.
Maybe it should.
Yeah.
And, but we could have revenue to cover it, I get your point.
That would be my.
Mark.
Do we not use person, sorry.
Mark.
Go ahead, Audra.
Can I say something really quick?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Allison.
Go ahead.
Um, Dave St. Laurent has, has chimed in on the chat, but it reminded me to let you guys know that we are doing away with the fuel depot. We're in the process of doing that.
Right.
I don't see.
Mission is.
Yeah, don't worry about it. It was not the chat.
Start using gas cards, it's more accountability, it's easier to track.
Right.
We're going to, out of the business of selling fuel to other municipalities and entities, and we are scheduled to start that on July 1st.
Okay.
Great, excellent.
Thank you, do we have a motion to accept this one? I'm sorry, Allison.
How many different entities were we in the business of selling fuel to?
The school district.
I sent letters out to, I think, five.
Yep.
Now, do, do they all pay us on time?
They do, they do, but it's, it's a lot of staff time, it's Janice, it's Marlene.
Oh, no, I get that, but I'm just like, because we've noticed that we are not so good sometimes at making sure that other towns are paying us, or just.
No, they pay on, they pay on time.
Everybody pays.
Okay, I would like to make a motion, the department head, town manager, and budget committee all agree on the amount of $466,553.
My second.
Motion made in second, any discussion, questions? All's in favor? Four zero, moving on to parking lots.
This should be separate.
What?
This being separate. For the record, I'm fine with this being separate, I think that parking lots and flats not rolled in.
Oh, oh, thank, oh, okay. The apartment yours is a little higher, Audra, because of the parking lot lease?
Yeah, and that's because of the.
Understood.
Yeah.
This is the, that's the Knox Mill operation, got it. Mark?
I'll make a motion that we approve the amount from the town manager and budget committee of $72,000.
My second.
Motion made in second, any questions, discussion? All's in favor? Two tree program, which is, and again, all three are, they're not, they are, they're all at $53,000, which is principally building the tree maintenance program, which is ongoing and it, the majority of the cost here, and the, and then the part, the other part is the shade tree at 14,000 included in the second item, Mark.
I'm glad to see that we're increasing the amount for shade tree planting, I think it's very important, and I would like to make a motion to approve the amount from the department head, town manager, and budget committee all agree on $53,000.
Got it.
My second.
Well, she beat you to it, so motion made in second, any discussion, questions? Sophie, obviously.
So my only question is, we're, we're adding $10,000 to the tree shade planting.
Yep.
But does that cover the cost of the tree, trees and labor that plants, or what's, because, that's enormous, and it's great, I, I agree with you, Mark, we need more shade trees, but.
Yes.
Yes.
That'll cost, cover everything.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions, discussion, all's in favor? Oh, Allison, a question?
So this was something that a few years ago, we tried to, the tree maintenance budget is, has not been a tree maintenance budget, that has been a tree removal.
Right.
Budget.
Right, right.
And I swear, we tried to do something where we broke that up at one point, because there's a big difference between pruning trees to, we tried to separate that out a little bit so that it could, it was to direct more pruning and less removal, or to keep track of that somehow, or, is that kept track of separately at all?
It is separated, you need a budget.
That's what I thought.
Tree maintenance and tree removal?
Tree maintenance of 39,000 and shade tree planting of 14,000.
Tree maintenance encompasses tree cabling, pruning, and removal.
Right, and you've got 39,000 in there.
No. I'm saying removal and pruning are two different things.
Yeah, we don't. Yeah, we don't.
But we've
It would only be on like, you know, if you look at an invoice.
Right.
There's no other.
Right.
Yeah.
All right.
I mean, that's another thing to keep track of would be like so costly and
Yeah.
Well, it's more, I guess it's we're having, it's clearly we're showing an effort to plant more trees, but
Yep.
We've gone through a lot of acrobatics in the in the past trying to encourage more tree
Planting.
Planting, but it hasn't really worked.
We're increasing the budget this year.
Any any other questions or comments? All's in favor? Was there? Thank you. Then to our next item, which is, well, I always call it provider agencies, Community Services, which is a budget for one, two, three, four, five entities and they're at all at 18,5 between department head
I have one question. I know it came up during the budget meetings.
Yep.
The Penn Bay YMCA teen center has been closed because they sold the building.
Right.
And they mentioned that they're going to, they're working with the school to go into the Rose Center when that's finished. Will we have a new budget? Will they come back to us for more money at that point or will that be absorbed by being in that in that in that building?
I don't know.
Okay, just curious.
Good answer.
Because the teen center is, you know, I feel bad for the people that don't have it available to them. It's a great, great thing for the middle school people. I'd like to make a motion. We approve the Community Services for the same amount, Department Head, Town Manager, Budget Committee of $18,500.
You're a second?
Yeah, I second. I'm
Discussion on the items. These are made up of four agencies and then the McGonigahock Watershed piece, which is basically, isn't this our funding of the operations of the
The
What is what is this $6,500 for?
So that used to be plowed into the recreation budget and it was specifically for the, oh, gosh, what did we call it? Like Lake Stewart?
Stewart.
We called it the Lake Stewart, didn't we?
Yes.
At one point, I know we did.
Yes.
And and we appointed that person as the lake warden.
Right.
But after speaking with the new executive director and a conversation with Randy.
Yep.
We all agree that sort of moving away from that would be advantageous, given, you know, some of the, you know, different user group conflicts at the lake and some of the desires of, you know, residents as to what they would And I'm not talking about just lake residents. I'm talking about town of Camden residents. So what, and this is something that, again, we need to come back to the select board as an agenda item.
Okay.
But appointing Randy and then deputizing the patrol officers as inland harbor master. And then they can do more patrols and enforcement out on the lake and that kind of frees up Aaron to focus more on the education outreach, looking for invasive species, farrowing, all those sort of things. Or, I'm sorry, what, no, what's it called? It's not that.
Oh, it's a goose egg.
A goose egg thing.
Oh, what's it called? Uh, oddling? No, there's a word.
There is a word. I don't remember what it is.
Adling.
Adling, yes.
Now, this means that the, what we used to call the the lake warden will now be, I think you call it something else just now. Is there another?
Harbor master and it'll, it's, and that's why I thought
Okay.
They're better reflected as sort of like a community service agency that we support as opposed to
So this this will be funding that going through Randy and company?
No, 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 no.
No, no.
We're still
This is overall reduction going
Got it. Okay.
Yeah, we're still funding the watershed association
Got it.
To do all the things that they do that that are beneficial to the entire watershed, but it's just not focused on the
And any kind of enforcement or
I've lost track. Do we have a motion in a second here?
This is really, I mean, this is a good thing and in terms of
I made a motion. Yes, I did make a motion. It was seconded.
Any other discussion on this item?
So the question is that all those organizations are performing services for us.
Yes.
So these are not donations? Nope. Okay, so they're
I mean, we're supposed to be evaluating whether
Yeah, the fundamental
Do we do that? Do we evaluate? What do you do?
We do not evaluate.
We're doing right now. I mean, I think
But I mean, like, you know, it's
They went over it with the budget committee.
They did. They did. They did. And the only thing that I keep coming up with is these have been, I for the life of me, if I had 10 agencies come at me with their recommendations for, I would have difficulty turning any one of them down. Therefore, if it was my decision, I would turn all of them down.
Well, I mean, and there's
Other towns fund us at a much higher level, actually.
Certain things you can't, you can't really argue with, like the Legion, they put the flags out, they have the parades, they do all the, you know, things they say they're gonna do. Same thing with like the darting club and
Yeah, it's a philosophical thing, but again, I wouldn't suggest any changes here. Any further discussion on the motion in the second?
I mean, some of this is like contracted
Yeah.
Service. The only thing I was gonna say is the, it would be, at one point, we talked about having a meeting or a workshop, just maybe even with Lincolnville about larger lake issues and priorities in general. We always get questions about, you know, what is, you know, who makes the decision about how large the swimming area is at Barrett's Cove? Things like the, we have a report from the previous lake warden that says we need to dredge. I don't know how that decision ultimately gets made, just things like that, like what are the major priorities on the lake? What do people want more of or less of? And also trying to figure out with like the McGonigahock Watershed Association where which areas they might want to take on more? Like water quality monitoring has been a long-term goal to do more of that year round. Is that something, like if we gave them a little bit more money, would they monitor the whole, you know, the lower part of the river too? Would they be willing to do that year round? Anyway, just a plug for maybe at some point a just lake-related priorities meeting.
Yes. All those in favor? Four zero. Onto the Camden.
Elder labor.
Did I miss one?
No, but I would just also maybe leisure services. I have a hard time understanding the leisure in there.
Yeah, that, yeah.
So that would be just a footnote that we need to kind of maybe rethink. These are community services.
The budget structure workshop.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's a whole bunch of them listed here.
And I'm just pointing
No, I understand your good point. Onto the library where our 48%, as I recall, the number, which is our share of the budget they develop is $523,000 even
Yes.
Of a department head, town manager, and budget committee.
I'll make a motion. We approve the $523,000 that are agreed on by department head, town manager, and budget committee.
I second.
Motion made in second. Comment?
Yes.
Yes.
So I did not attend the library, the budget presentation, so I don't know the where the $30,000 increase comes from.
It's primarily wages.
Yep. Yep.
So and their wages, they're paying the wages burdened, right? We're just reimbursing them that cost.
Yes.
So that staff is not part of our health insurance?
Right.
So what's the, so
This is an arm-length check of $523,000.
Yeah.
Effectively, the town, town is providing a check annually in the amount of $523,000.
And and the library has always been very responsible and raised over 50, over 50% of their own, the funds do donations, which is great because you don't see that always in other towns.
Yeah, but it doesn't mean that we're writing a check without asking questions, especially when it's half a million dollars.
No.
Library.
I agree with you.
I love the library. It doesn't mean I'm not gonna ask questions. I mean, it's
Well, the issue becomes the continuing discussions about who's responsible for what in terms of repairs over there and in terms of, you know, the, they are carrying a share of the Siemens work that was done. But the roof issue they brought up and other things and are we, you know, obliged to, you know, pay those things? That's a discussion that we've had. And that that remains on the table. At some point, as you get close to, you know, chunks are changed and in my opinion, the town needs to get more involved in the development of their budget and what they're, what they're funding and including their budget discussions in detail because their meetings are not public. We are, we are invited to attend. They are now? Good. We're invited to attend. Right, that's not, but I think they need to be open and and I'm sure they would welcome that, but I, you know, right now, at this point in time, we're contractually agreed over the years that we fund 48% of their budget. Eric? Is that accurate, Audra?
It's not a contract. It's just a practice.
It's in the neighborhood of, I don't think it's an exact 40%. It's in the neighborhood of what they need based on what they've been able to raise.
I thought it was 48%.
Well, it started, I forget which direction they're trying to go. We dropped down a little bit and trying to ratchet us back up or whether
Right. Anyway, motion is made in second. Any further discussion? All's in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Allison, go ahead.
I mean, I think, are we still paying off any of the library-related bonds?
No.
That Harbor Park dropped?
Just the their portion of the Siemens, but Harbor Park dropped off
Right.
A couple of years ago.
That was a while ago. That was a while ago.
I think it was pretty recent. I think it was like, I fly 20 maybe. Yeah.
But I mean, I think that's the major thing is trying to have a clear understanding of whether, because they do have all the authority and control over there. In the past, there had been sort of an assumption that they would also be saving money for things like, you know, the green roof or big, you know, projects that need to happen. But if we're gonna be doing that together, it's like we, when we set this budget every year, we kind of need to know, okay, well, what are the big things that are coming up? Like, you know, the sea, depending on how things get resolved with, you know, the seawall, there are solutions there that can be probably entirely grant funded and there are solutions that would have to be completely taxpayer funded and so Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's like this amount kind of works out okay and and we go along with it, supporting it every year, but then it can be a, it's a shock if all of a sudden we have to add, you know, another $500,000 to our, which is what we almost did a couple, a few years ago. It was like we were on the verge of $400,000 or $500,000 for sort of preemptively replacing that green roof, right?
One million.
One million. It was one million, yeah.
Well, it's still an issue outstanding and we
It's still an issue and it's still an issue that this thing only lasted 20 years or 30 years.
I want, I just want to correct this for the record right now. That does not need to be replaced. The only, when building engineers have looked at it, all of them have said, and the architect that installed it, it would be more invasive and do more damage to try to replace that than just to leave it alone. There are some misperceptions about what's causing leaks, but for the record, it does not need to be replaced. It's like saying my car or my washing machine is out of warranty, so I need to replace them.
Right.
It does not need to be replaced.
Thank you. My recollection was at the last budget committee I attended last year. So thank you for the
No, no, I just don't want to, because it's been brought up a couple of times and I just want to be very clear about that.
Do both entities agree on that?
I don't.
I don't think the library has had that discussion yet, but we had Siemens look at it.
Yep.
And they were very clear, no, it shouldn't be replaced. We, many, many, many conversations with the architects that designed it and all of them concur on that. It's very different when you get an opinion from a contractor who says, yeah, sure, I could replace it and this is what it would entail and this is what it would cost.
When did we get the Siemens report on it?
There was no report. They just went and took a look at it and
Okay.
So maybe we, do we have like a running list of possible points of disagreement or?
Well
I think we need to examine. It's another thing that
We have like 5 million workshops we need to schedule with all the different
We can hear it Monday, March.
People and the library and the
Any other discussion on the motion? All's in favor? Four zero. Thank you very much. And on to the, if I'm correct, the harbor.
Culture and Recreation.
Yeah, so the library should be called Culture and Recreation. I'm not sure harbor is, they're working people there. I mean, maybe some of us
Yeah, I, I, I agree. Mark?
I have a question I just have to ask Steve. It says here, line 1205 is for uniforms. I don't notice you ever wearing, I guess you have a uniform on. I just somewhat, I guess that's a
Oh, yeah, look at that.
You mean the $900 item?
Yeah, $900 shirt. It's impressive.
Whoa. That's funny that you said that tonight and he's like wearing a uniform and
I have
I didn't know that.
They do. They do.
I guess I just didn't remember. I was just having fun at your expense. Sorry about that.
Getting off the fun side, I do have a question. What percentage of time do you spend at Snow Bowl every year?
Well, I would imagine I go there when the town is older.
What percentage?
I thought we weren't gonna do this.
Yeah, we are.
Oh, we are, okay.
Wait, I have a question, just like I did when we
Five months.
Okay, five months. And and our revenue from, we started with from the, for his, we were immunized from the snowballs, how much?
So
$10,000.
How much?
$10,000.
This, this snowball pays the town $10,000 for him.
Wow, that's a deal.
Yeah.
And again, again, this is not trying to get, you know, punitive. It's just that I think just like we discussed with the other revenue, we're gonna discuss, when we get to the revenue line for the workers' comp situation, it seems to me that the revenue line, when we get to the revenue part, should be increased.
I I would say that these are some factors to keep in consideration.
Okay.
I still expect Steve to do harbor master stuff in the winter.
Yep.
So it's not like all of his time is just snowball related.
Mm-hmm.
And say we were to hire someone to do what Steve does.
As a trail manager?
As a, yeah, or a patroler.
Park manager.
Terrain park manager, patroler, jack of all trades, whatever it is he does out there.
Terrain park engineer.
Supervisor, yeah. All those different functions, we wouldn't be paying them at Steve Pixley Harbor Master rate, so
So what you're saying is you feel the $10,000 is adequate?
I'm not saying that necessarily. I'm just saying I wouldn't look to what Steve's
It's not hour for hour. I agree with that. It's not five months. I agree with that. You can't, again, you're not doing accounting by time card every day. I get that. But it just seems to me that $10,000 is low, but we can discuss that in revenue.
Yeah, yeah, no, I would agree, but I would say
Doesn't affect your budget here.
The way I would think about it is more of like what would the snowball pay to hire someone to do the things that Steve does there?
Well, then you're arguing for more money.
Yeah.
What's that?
You're agreeing for more money.
Higher number.
You're, you're
Oh, no, no, it will be a higher number, but it's not as higher, it's not as high as just saying, okay, well, what does it cost Steve to be out there for five months?
The cost to us, the cost to the harbor is not as great as the cost to the snowball would be if they had to seek outside the harbor.
And it comes down to the $10,000.
Yes.
You've got to remember when we're taking, when we're doing things with a person or a person's time, it isn't just the salary part, it's also the benefits part, which is 30% of salary, right, Audra? Probably 30%.
Well, again, if we were to go outside of the, you know, and hire someone to do it, it would not be a position with benefits.
Oh.
Anyway, let's get on to the, any questions to the, go ahead, Mark.
I just have, I just have one thing I want to say. I think it's, we're lucky to have somebody that can do, perform both jobs, that harbor master and also can work at the snowball. It's not necessary, you know, that's not a, that's not a talent you can find everywhere, so
That's right. Steve Pixley's a horrible plow driver, but good at the
Can't win them all, Steve.
Appreciate that. Controller and terrain park manager.
They're actually
Are there any questions on the numbers of his budget while Steve is here and sat the whole night? Does anybody want to ask him something about the budget?
I have one question. The department head number's a little higher than the town manager and budget committee. $267,050 as opposed to $258,650. And that change is where? That change is
Yeah, it's in, it's in the general maintenance line.
Maintenance, yeah.
There's about $6,000 there, yeah.
I mean, Audra, seriously, it was, because we've been saying for years, like, we're holding off a little bit on this redevelopment because we're, you know, not gonna do it without planning for sea level rise and a few associated things, but we have also recognized that there are some things that are falling apart down there. And we
Hey, go for it if you want to give Steve more money.
I think that, I mean, have you, if you go down there, I know there is some urgency, some feel some urgency to like redo that boardwalk and I think it's great that we have not done it so far because if we had done it on schedule from whenever, I think it was 2017 that you thought it should all be done by, then we probably would have done it at taxpayer expense and not well-planned for sea level rise. So this is allowing us to do it better and also to work out some of the parking things and blah, blah, blah. But I do want to make sure that we can like fix the holes that fall, it's pretty
The holes where
So I feel like, so the boardwalk, the pilings, the things that fall off the
Yep.
So I, if I can piggyback on that, does the general maintenance also addresses fixing steamboat landing, the docks?
Oh, yeah, like that's another one.
No, but that's another one because Dominique has been fixing them.
Well, it was, it was, it was placed separate, then, yeah.
Yeah, but so is there enough in the, in
Yeah, like some of that should just be replaced.
It's like, what, $5,000 difference?
Should you get up and on the mic?
Oh, you know what? Yes, and also I want to increase this because there's no safety equipment at safe boat landing on the docks.
Steamboat landing?
Steamboat landing.
Oh, definitely not.
There's no, there's no safety equipment.
We don't have oil absorbent pads. We don't have spill kits.
A donut to throw.
Donuts.
Or lifeline. So and that's, and that should totally be
Oh, you think over at Steamboat we should have a throwing, a throw buoy? Yeah.
I mean, we have zero there.
Good point. I've never
There's zero safety equipment. We talked about it with the harbor committee last week.
Do you actually have that, the
I put one up over at the head of the harbor. I put one, so I could get one for them there too, yeah.
That's, that's
A throw ring, yeah, I can definitely get one. Good.
Things like that that we could
I'm making a suggestion. We raise the maintenance line to what?
Well, to what Steve was requesting.
Which was six? No, it was
Fifty-four.
Yeah. Can you, can you articulate really quickly the difference that
Well, I mean, what happened, what happens is once in a while I get caught and, for instance, last summer, you know, I, two times, the, the electrical
Yep.
Pedestals that got hit and I had to hire an electrician and, you know, that was $6,000 and then I happened to, I buy a big chain in bulk, I buy it in a big barrel and I leave it over at the Boating Building and I take what I need it when I'm replacing stuff.
Yep.
And I happened to run out of chain in two, three different sizes all at the same time, so I had to go buy three new barrels and
Yep.
So it just happens once in a while. It's like, it's nice if I have that, but it's not 100%. Audra kind of talked me out of that. It's just, it's up to you.
And I argue about the chain because I, I am convinced that, you know how much chain you use every year, we could, we could put that on a rolling basis so that it's
Well, for sure. If I wasn't, if I didn't have my, adopt my father's like frugality, I would buy it in sections and and it would actually cost a little bit more money. But if you buy it at the barrel, you, then you have, and I have a place of storage because, I mean, Rick, Rick never minded that I would put them until I set the Boating Building, you know, so
The graveyard kind of
Audra, do you feel that the maintenance line you've picked will cover that over, maintenance is all about annualizing a number. It's not about chasing bumps.
I know, but sometimes it's just like the storm comes and knocks things out down there.
But I'm asking her a question. What is your opinion about
Again, it's one where
Difference, I
Yes.
Of all the places to, I mean, we unders
If Mark would have
Down there rather than
I'll make a motion. We approve the
Steve overspends his budget pretty regularly, so
We're just like
Make a motion.
Well, then why don't we try to budget for
Go ahead, Mark.
I'll make a motion. We approve the department head number of $267,050.
I second.
Motion made in second discussion.
Is that gonna cover like some of the boardwalk stuff as needed or You're feeling more comfortable?
Yeah.
Okay.
All those
Well, tonight, thank you.
All those in favor? Three, four. That's all right. That's all right. Three, four, that's all right, that's all right. Thank you very much, Steve.
Yeah, thank you.
For hanging out.
Thank you.
On to our culture and recreation.
Oh, for the water fountain too, Steve, you might need it.
Okay, I'm going to take a break for a moment.
Okay, go ahead, Mark. We'll, we'll take a five minute break. We'll take it before we hit culture.
At the lodge.
Yes.
Oh.
It's a well.
What?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have to, because it's a, we use it for the summer rec, it has to be tested.
But we don't use it for the drinking at this, when you're at the snowball in the winter? I mean, it's $300, so it doesn't really matter, but it's just really confusing.
It is definitely. But we do have a motion in a second to...
Do we have enough money for what Beth says? Is, does this budget include the infield of the soft? This stuff?
Well, Audra explained that that was going to be funded through the, through the Toboggan.
No, she says infield of the soft.
Field is different.
Needs to be done this summer.
This is a, this is, this is a higher budget than it's been, for the most part. But it's, it's up to the actuals.
What's funded through the Toboggan surplus is the repair of the access to the Toboggan. And on all the mud that's been dried.
So it's a repair of the field where they parked all the cars?
Yeah, but also the...
Well, yeah, the complication in my mind is, is the return from the Toboggan is in the snowball budget. That probably $60,000, I'm guessing, is the excess of revenue over expenses for that great event. And that's sitting in the snowball budget, which is outside of the general fund.
Which should be in the general fund, that's what you're saying.
Well, it gets into this, you know...
I get it, I get it.
Taking a revenue, a revenue line, are you proposing a revenue line?
No, no. That's way over complicating it. We're just saying that we'll come to you and say that we have this much available that we made from Toboggan Nationals. It did X amount of damage to the field. Very simple.
Just take it out of there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not...
All right. Got it.
Yeah.
Makes sense. All right. Motion made in second here. Any other discussion? All's in favor? Four zero. Thank you. On to parks, which is, which is a similar situation.
How many parks do we have? I know I should know this.
About 20.
Or depending on whether you include the access points and the parks that should be parks that have been forgotten.
That's correct.
Beth will chime in in the chat and talk.
How many parks?
There were 20 that I saw from the Parks and Rec Committee had listed, and we toured around the town a couple of years ago, actually. It, there's quite a few. Many of them...
Tor Harbor Road?
Yep.
Really?
Yep. Every little path that I, somebody couldn't walk through. But it was interesting, they're not all, you know, the mega parks. There's some of them little trails and over towards, um...
I'm just curious, because I, I don't, you know...
Yeah, I know, and it, but they're all different sizes and it, they all need some form of maintenance from Shertail Point to all these parks that we have. Um, but this is trying to fund those and, and it looks like...
So these are all the parks excluding the snowball in the summer?
Yes.
But it said that it'd be 700 acres.
Right.
700 acres?
Let's see, acres.
So the budget, the budget for FY '22, the difference between FY '22...
Metrics?
The time, twenty.
The heck?
The difference between the budget of FY '22 and now is about $12,000. $11,000, that's the, that's the difference I see.
That's not even keeping up with inflation and with the...
Well, the whole budget only pieces 3%.
Thing when I worked in Australia. In reverse.
We've got stuff falling apart all over the place. And people, people like these parks. I don't know.
I, I, I've always believed that when Parks and Rec listed and some of the, just, or the tour, all the things that needed to be repaired, there was never enough money in the parks budget for doing one-third of those. And I, I still think that remains.
Yeah, I totally agree.
So maintenance...
People, Beth has her hand, maybe, should we...
Yeah, go ahead. Bring her in.
I will say the quality of, of my thinking is declining.
But I, this is because of frugality, I guess, but there's, there's all kinds of stuff that needs to be maintained. Did you find her?
Hi.
Hi, Beth. You heard, you heard a discussion about the, about the stuff with last, last discussion we were talking about was the adequacy of maintenance against the number, whatever, who cares the exact number of parks we have. It's a lot. And it's a lot to cover. And we have had a list of things we need to do in every one of them, and every one of them has stuff. And we've been chipping away, I know, Beth, but the grounds maintenance, if we look at just this parks budget, it still doesn't seem adequate for the fixes we need to get done.
It's lower.
But we do still, we do have, still have this year, which we carry forward quite a bit of funds to do some stuff this spring.
Uh huh. Okay.
Which I don't know if Jody can share with you, but there is still quite a bit of money in, in the parks and the recreation budget to do some fixes this spring that we plan on doing, so.
Do you feel as adequate?
We're carrying about 15,000 this year from last year.
Because things didn't get done, or what? We didn't have enough time to do them, or do we need more staff? Is, is the problem that we don't have enough staff to even, it's that?
We've been, we've been down to, to staff members, which we've, we've filled for the winter, so we'll have extra people this summer. But I'm, I still have one position that I've been unable to fill.
What would you, do you need more in order to be able to make these positions more attractive, or like?
It's, I think it's a combination of that and, and the workforce. Um, this person will also probably be custodial at the public landing.
I mean, at some point, there's a price point where people will abandon their current position and come to work for the town at the public landing. Um, I mean, might, or we contract it out? I, I...
We couldn't even get anyone to do it contracted.
I don't doubt it. Not now.
I mean, this is not a way to recruit people, first of all, by talking about it this way.
That's correct.
I, I wanna, I just want to be realistic about the challenges that we've had. It's, we are facing the same workforce shortages and issues recruiting that everyone else is across the country.
Hiring people at the transfer station on a regular basis, and there, there is some hiring going on in the world.
I don't know what to tell you, Allison. It is difficult to find people and keep people.
I agree. I agree. We're going down.
Allison, I was a third down from staff and, for staff this winter. And we had to cross-train a lot of people.
Yeah.
Is there, are there things we can do to help you recruit more people, or, I mean, it just sounds like we're, we're giving up and we're just saying, you know, it just never...
Oh, no, I'm not giving up.
Okay.
No.
So do we need to offer better ways?
But it would be nice, even if we, there are people listening right now to these, you know, the positions that are available. Maybe. Um, it would be, if we could talk about them in a way that doesn't make them sound so terribly miserable. There's an opportunity here, maybe, for somebody to approach us with a proposal to
Do something.
Watch over the public bathrooms. Maybe even somebody that charges people for toilet paper, or, um, like at the Union Fair.
I was happy to clean them a little bit last year, so.
Yep.
So is it, is it a wage thing that we should, we should look into increasing?
I, I, I think it's all the, I think it's all above, so the market for, to Audra's point, is a tough one right now, and I'm not gonna, certainly not gonna solve it here. We could also approach Rotary and ask them for some assistance in some of these areas, but...
I'm just saying that it seems, it seems really low compared to what we need to do. So I'm, I'm not sure. First of all, I, I haven't seen Beth's, Beth's presentation on what we need to do in the parks, but it seems to me that, that maintenance for the grounds is low in, in light of the number of things we need to repair, that a continued shortage of staff needs to be addressed, um, maybe by considering increasing wages, but it has to be in line with what the town offers, right?
Well, and that's the problem, is that I...
We're constrained. We cannot...
Yes, we can say, yeah, well, we'll start you at $27 to be a custodian or be a Parks and Rec employee. Like, you can't do that and ignore all the other people that we have working for the town.
I know, I understand.
Exactly.
That's the hard position that we're in, that, you know, it's just, and it's not just the custodian for that. Like, we added other positions because we wanted Beth to be able to do more projects.
Yeah.
And then she just wasn't able to find and recruit people. So I'm not, I'm not trying to make the custodial position sound miserable because we found a wonderful custodian for this building. It's more a matter of, it's hard to find people across the board to do certain things. And when we've been successful at it, it's department heads doing something different. Not doing the standard, putting out a job advertisement and getting people in.
We're not gonna solve that conundrum here.
No, I understand.
But I mean, I just, I want to be very clear about this because we are trying very hard and it is very difficult. And, you know, Beth is one of those departments where it's particularly difficult.
Yeah, I agree. And, and increasing the budget for certain maintenance, we can increase it, but it ain't gonna get done if we don't have the people.
Right.
She's coming.
Yeah, we've tried to be creative, and we're, we're sharing Abby Leonard from Rockport, and she's the patrol director for the winter. We're, you know, Pixley hired Dylan, who's also out at the snowball in the winter, and he'll be his deputy harbor master in the summer. So we're trying to be creative with how we can bring in good, good employees, so.
Can we contract out some, I mean, like what businesses do for, when cleaning services? Could we just try contracting out certain aspects that are...
We did try doing that, and we didn't get any responses a number of times.
Well, maybe we need to just go around, pick up the phone and talk to the...
Called people specifically that I knew had private, no, I'm just telling you the things that we've tried.
Let's, let's not.
Let's not, let's not try to solve this.
Right.
I think the only question is, is there enough money?
I, I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion. We approve the number that the town manager and the budget committee agree on, which is 367,310 dollars.
A second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All's in favor? Thanks, Beth. I like, I like your glasses, Beth.
And thank you, Beth. Thanks to you, I know we spent $525 per acre.
Nice.
Which is, which is, I like unique costs. They speak to me, so, so thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Beth. Does she have any comments on, we're moving on to dams.
Wow.
Which is, again, the water's not...
Talk about not...
Yep.
This is now the wastewater department is, is ultimately subsidizing this because there's no way that Dave Bolstridge can just do this in his free time.
Well, there's only a stipend here of $7,800.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
So it's just totally, you know, and obviously other wastewater employees oftentimes have to operate the dams.
Yep. Again, that's another one of those...
Well, so, um, I mean, and this isn't anything that you can really show in the budget, but this'll be the first year where it's Public Works employees instead of wastewater.
Oh.
Oh, sorry. Can you say that again?
Um, so from, from this year moving forward, it will be Public Works that will be the dam control agent and those employees.
So this is gonna change?
Yes. Well, the budget, I mean, for budgeting purposes, it isn't, but I guess it's just, you know...
Responsibility.
Right. And I, I think that, you know, it's, it's been difficult because wastewater has been subsidizing this.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. There'll be overtime things where somebody needs to be called out to open a gate or check something. And, um, yeah, it just, like, I, I didn't think it was anything that we could justify, and it's too difficult to track. Whereas if it sits with Public Works and it's in the general fund, at least we're keeping all of that.
Keeping the labor and the whole thing in the general fund, not in the special revenue.
Right. And I, I do think that we need to get to a point where we're accounting for what they actually cost us better than what we do.
Would agree.
But I think the first step in it is just making sure that we're not...
Okay.
We, we can put our hands to our hearts and say the wastewater department is not subsidizing our dams.
I mean, also, just when you look at the matching of the service and the skills and the, the dams are very clearly related to stormwater. And it's always, to me, seemed like an odd reflection of town thinking that the dams would have been put in wastewater. It's really, like, kind of like back in the day when the Mekunekuk River was nothing but a canal for sewage.
Well, and I also think it, it was actually a pretty recent development, because it was the whole, like, Ken Bailey to Ross Parker transition. And I think a lot of it came down to, that all happened around the same time the town was given the Seabright Dam and did choose to operate it as a hydroelectric power facility. And the pumps and all of that, Ross and his staff were very familiar with it. So it made sense for wastewater because you had a matching of skills when it came to that specific dam. But now that we don't use Seabright for that purpose anymore, it doesn't make sense at all for it to be a wastewater function.
I mean, it, and it is just dealing with the high hazard dams and engineering reports and planning for flooding impacts. And it's a, it's a very important
Yep.
Job. I don't see how, um, I mean, this, this number just isn't enough in terms of the skill. There's gonna have to be some training that happens. Dave just has a lot of this knowledge already. I mean, he knows how fast the lake comes up. We're gonna have to have him train new people in addition to... So I just, this, we've gotta get closer to... Also the Montgomery Dam, the $5,000 for, sorry.
And I'm looking at the way total dams is 16,286 from the three department heads, three departments. And then we have the separate McGuntukuk, Montgomery and Seabright Dam breakouts. And I'm not quite sure how those figures match into what we're going to approve in the...
McGuntukuk Dam's 2050 you're talking about, it only applies FY '22, not '23. See the vertical columns?
Yeah.
There's nothing on the FY '23 for Montgomery Dam.
Right.
Oh.
So where does the, where's that $6,200?
What's that?
That was FY '22.
Yes, but it's not, he's right, that it's not in the McGuntukuk Dam. The McGuntukuk Dam for 2022 is zero.
Yeah, the FY '22 number doesn't make sense. Neither does 20...
And Montgomery Dam is 7,100, Seabright is 5,100. I don't quite understand where those monies are broken down.
I think these are actuals that she hasn't...
Well, the act, it says actuals also.
Yeah, these are the actuals that she has not copied over onto those lines. So...
That's correct. In, in the, in the...
Do we get Jody back up?
FY '22 actuals and budgets seem to be amiss.
Yeah, I think there's, I don't even, the actuals, we've only spent $700 so far in '22. The 2,000 and the 4,200 and the 6,200, I don't think that's actually supposed to be, it's not part of FY '22 column. It's that...
You're right. You're right. Yep, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, I didn't look at, but I'm trying to have a hard time figuring out where they are, where they're supposed to be.
FY '22 actuals down below shouldn't, they should be zeros, not numbers. It shouldn't be there.
It's an alignment issue in the Excel spreadsheet, honestly.
Yep, I get it.
It's...
Okay.
I get it.
Is there gonna be a, so this is gonna go to Public Works now?
That's what I understand. Next year.
Reflected somehow in the, is there a revenue? I don't, no.
No.
No, because it's all general fund.
It shouldn't be revenue.
So where is this money going? So we're budgeting to spend this?
So it's going, I mean, the same things that it went to before, just instead of paying...
Oh, we're gonna do stipends?
Yeah.
But in order to train people to do it, and we want them to do it well, and I don't, I don't know, I just don't see how that's... I think Dave has been just doing this, and there's no, it's been totally unfair to him, in my opinion, in terms of the amount of time that he spends on it. It's rolled into his job. We can't expect somebody else to, or multiple people to take this on.
Is David aware of this number in here? Has he got any comment on it?
Right, I'm talking about Dave Bolstridge.
Yeah, Dave Bolstridge.
Aware of it, because that's what he's been...
He prepared this budget. Yeah.
Okay.
So basically, what you're saying is that we should put a, in the wastewater budget, we should put a line for training to reimburse Dave Bolstridge for the training cost to train people to take over?
I'm not, I guess I'm not totally sure what kind of training needs to happen to get other people to have Dave Bolstridge's base level of knowledge plus whatever. We've decided, I mean, it's been wastewater.
Well, what we could do is, um...
Needs to be more than, we could ask...
We could increase the stipend to reflect the funds that we'll need for Dave Bolstridge to train someone, as well as what we would pay the dam control agent. And quite honestly, it's gonna be Dave St. Laurent for a while, and then he's gonna work on...
Yep.
He's also gonna have some other public works staff that...
I agree with you, but do we know enough now to know what to increase this by?
I mean, I would have to make a guess.
I have no idea.
Yeah, I'd have to make a guess.
But we just, every year we say, we have this lower than what it...
Unless we have data to, you know, to make a change, we just leave it.
Put it in the wastewater budget.
And knowing it's in action, then we have to take hold forward.
Or stipend, I mean, just increasing the stipends is what's gonna need to happen because we already know that more than one person, for example, needs to do the Montgomery Dam. And the way that that's been accomplished to date has been Dave Bolstridge gets his stipend of $1,900 for the Montgomery Dam, and then he has usually a wastewater employee help, so.
The question is, what?
I guess you can still do that, but with, but with public, I mean, it's okay to have Public Works do that. You just pay them overtime.
$10,000?
That's, yeah, that's what we'll be doing in practice.
Right.
Yeah.
Unless we have a number to change to 7,800 to...
Well, okay, here's what I would say.
Okay.
I, there is just no way we're gonna be spending $5,000 on the Montgomery Dam this year. So you could just shuffle, I mean...
Amongst the accounts, you get plenty to cover, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. I mean, we could do that now, though, if, if you'd like to.
Or it could be a Montgomery Dam stipend. I mean, really, those things ultimately, those are supposed to be separated because the east and west dams are part of the Lincolnville, you know, shared discussion. Whereas the stipend for Montgomery, it's really a different skill set anyway with...
It's, but the 16,000, you're saying the 16,286 is enough.
That might be, yeah.
Can stay the same?
Well...
It would. It'd just be different.
I mean, we could, we could just keep it the same for this year and just, again, track it and...
Yeah, I agree.
And do you want to rename Line 0821, 2051 Montgomery Dam stipend? No, because it hasn't been the case that...
Just for our expenses and...
You're getting into the...
Just get, but the wall stuff, we...
So they can do whatever they want for that $5,000 for the Montgomery Dam. It can be used for stipends or whatever.
We should move to the overall number, at least for this year.
You want to take...
So carry forwards in this, in this section as well.
Okay.
That's a good point.
Okay.
Mark.
Then... I was gonna say, why don't we approve same figure department head, town manager, budget committee, $16,286? My question is, do we want to make the Montgomery Dam figure 3,000 and take 2,000, add it to the stipend? And so the 16,286 would stay the same?
I think that level of, it's just so hard.
Chasing rabbits, don't do it.
Well, it's more, and it's more likely, though, because it needs two people to close it and open it, that it would be that damn anyway that we would have other people coming out there for.
So you have it there, so you...
Yeah, so it would just, we'd be using less of that line for things like maintenance and more of it for things like personnel.
Leave it the same. So the motion is just to approve the department head, town manager, budget committee amount of $16,286.
Yes, sir.
A second.
Discussion, current discussion. All's in favor? Four zero. On to cemetery maintenance. Cemetery maintenance has 51,100, department head, town manager, and budget committee. Any comments, Audra, that we should be...
No, we should keep it like that.
I'll, I'll make a motion. We approve the amount from the department head, town manager, and budget committee for cemetery maintenance at $51,100.
I spent a good amount of time looking at this, too, the cemetery committee.
No, I, I second, I was at the meeting when we talked about the budget. So I, that's why I'm confident with this.
Further discussion? All's in favor? Four zero. Thank you. Um, Audra, the next items in the, in the budget packet are debt capital and contin, debt capital contingency. The debt capital principal and interest, is there any decision?
No.
Just approve them.
That stuff we, we gotta pay, otherwise we're defaults of bonds. So unless it has any questions, we'll move on to, any questions you might have on...
Do you want motions on them?
I don't, you can if you'd like.
Do we need to?
If necessary, but go ahead.
I'll make a motion for debt capital contingency, debt service principal. We approve the amount that department head, town manager, and budget committee recommended of $691,568.
A second.
Motion made in second. Questions?
I'm just curious, Jody, maybe I'll come and have coffee with you. I'm just curious about the blended, the blended overall interest rate or what you, what trends you see, but that can be a separate conversation.
All different bonds, so...
I, I understand that, but I'm just curious. Jody knows I love looking into bonds.
Definitely have the data. Debt service interest, Mark.
Oh, we have to vote on the other one, don't we?
Oh, yes, I did. Everybody, questions, discussions, all those in favor?
Okay. I make a motion.
I'm, I...
What?
This is too long. One meeting for the budget is too much.
We've done every year, the last five years.
And it's always the same.
Sorry.
But, because some of these things we might want to actually talk about, but...
Debt service interest?
Debt service interest, uh, I make a motion that we approve the amount that the budget committee, town manager, and department head recommended of $145,171.
A second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. Questions? All's in favor? Four zero. And then we move on to capital reserves. Any questions there? Again, it's the same thing.
Well, I would say...
No, it's not. It's not. It's not. Go ahead. It's not.
This is a, this is one that you all need to weigh in on, so. I guess philosophically, and I said this to the budget committee, but just, just in case you guys weren't there at those meetings.
Yep.
I'm trying to move away from us, like, constantly carrying forward these major balances and capital improvements on a year-in, year-out basis.
Yes, yes.
I, I really want to focus capital improvements on things that we know we're gonna do in that particular financial year. And if it's something that, for whatever reason, is gonna span a number of financial years, it could be that we're trying to, you know, raise funds through a number of different areas. It could be that we know that, you know, this year we're gonna be doing the engineering and the planning, and then the next year we're actually gonna be doing the construction, whatever the reason may be. I think more for Jody's sanity than anyone else's. It would be great to get away from what we've been doing in the past, which is constantly dragging forward these, like, large balances into, you know, preceding financial years. So that's why I'm proposing to put so much in the capital reserves this year because I just know that we're not really there when it comes to a bunch of these projects and that we do need to build the money up over time, or we do need to do additional planning before we raise all the funds needed to do the project, so.
Is that the reason why we've got this 500, biggest part of this is $500,000 for John Street?
Well, that's, that's, the ARPA funds primarily, and, and saying that we're gonna commit those ARPA funds to that project. So that's another, that's another question, too.
But that's the biggest chunk of this, of this line, is it being increased, other than deleting the harbor dredging $10,000? Everything else is, yeah, it's close. And then adding the $100,000 for, you added, $100,000 for bridges?
Yes.
And which bridges are we talking about?
So that is the second amount that we would need to set aside for our contribution to the Rossin Avenue pedestrian bridge.
Got it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve the amount from the town manager and budget committee for capital reserves at the tot amount of $850,000.
A second.
Motion made in second. Discussions, questions?
Can you remind me what the Opera House maintenance is?
Sure.
So that's the fund that we set aside for things like, you know, major repairs to the buildings. So when we did, like, the repointing, that all came out of that, that reserve account when we had to replace the boiler before any of us got here.
The drainage?
That came out of there. Yeah, any work that we do on that. And we've just, um, you know, we overspent, and we purposely did this. We purposely overspent that reserve account, knowing that when we came into this financial year, we would make up for it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is, I mean, the Opera House is finally not leaking. It's just, for the first time in a really long time, these mystery leaks, it's really...
Really good progress on this building. We're gonna leave it in a lot better state than, I mean, we're not done.
No more bricks falling out?
Yeah. We still, yeah, we still need to do more repointing. But I, I figured that, um, you know, if we can build that up for a little while longer and maybe tackle that project next year instead of this year.
Drainage is not done yet either.
No.
No.
No, still some more to do.
You've got this building, so it should last another 100 years.
No, I mean, it was a really impressive effort.
It was a huge push.
I have just a quick question, if I may.
Yeah.
The, increasing the capital reserve has no tax impact, right? Because it's just an accounting... Well, I mean, does it, does it impact the, the mill rate, or the, the overall increase of the budget?
I, I am proposing that we offset it with, you know, one, that the ARPA funds will be moved over. There'll be some, you know, use of surplus that you could, you could philosophically say you're putting towards this.
Some of that when we get to the revenue section.
Yeah. But I would, yeah.
I'm curious about that.
If you didn't do that, it would absolutely have an...
Right.
Right, so you have to...
Right.
You don't, yeah. You can, you can't, we're not allowed to print money, to my knowledge.
That's too bad. That's too bad.
Not the federal government does that, not us.
Instead of Camden Bitcoin.
Any other questions? All's in favor? Thank you. Then, let me see here.
CIPs.
Now you went to capital improvements, Audra.
So really, this is kind of limited to...
Very limited, too.
Very limited, so two, two vehicles, so the police cruiser, which would, we're proposing to get another hybrid cruiser, a new pickup truck for the fire department.
Yes.
And that would be electric.
Hmm.
And then the two actual capital projects would be the balance of what we need to finish the Pearl Street project. So we've got, you know, a really good engineering estimate from plans that have been completed, and we're about eighty thousand dollars short, and that would get us everything that we need done on Pearl Street, if you add that to the money that we've already...
This is exclusive of the proposed improvement to Pearl Street itself with sidewalk and all that kind of, that's separate, right?
No, it would, it's everything. It's sewer, it's stormwater, it's...
This is just a shortfall on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you didn't mention the Curtis Island painting?
Yes.
That's a building.
Yes.
Question, things you took out, the public safety, building AV system, building repairs, and then the, the stuff down, but the compactor, lead paint removal, repointing for the Opera House, those are moving to a different year, is that why they're coming out?
Some of the smaller ones, like the trailer, the compactor, the lead paint removal, I am confident we can figure out how to, they're so small, and, you know, setting aside a CIP for them didn't seem logical when there are other areas where we can pull from.
It's too small, it's too small.
We can still pay for all that equipment, we can still do that, but they were too small. But the, the north side of the building, the repointing, that was one that I thought we should move to next year.
Okay, and what about the public safety repairs and AV system?
Yeah, that was another one that I thought we should move off to next year.
AV system?
Okay.
In what system?
You say AV system?
Audiovisual?
Did I miss that?
It's, no, the third one down, three dozen four, it's new.
F one?
Area.
All right.
And then the repairs can wait another year on the public safety building?
Repairs?
The third line down, or fourth line down, public safety building repairs.
No, they're in FY twenty-three?
Yeah, but the Department Head has it, but the Town Manager and Budget Committee don't. That's, those are the ones I'm asking about.
Yeah, that was deleted, Mark, you're correct.
No, but it's weird, because, look, the twenty-five thousand dollars is included with the fifty-five in the, oh, no, sorry, no, no.
Mark, right.
Yeah.
The repairs are deferred.
Yes. Yep.
We don't need them this year?
No, not at...
Okay, then I make a motion, we approve the Town Manager and Budget Committee recommendation of two hundred twenty thousand dollars.
I second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? All's in favor, four zero. Thank you. Then we're on, let me make sure I don't jump ahead too far here, onto just a discussion about, well, I guess contingency, is that correct, Audra?
Yes.
And currently proposing to add forty thousand dollars to the contingency account?
Yes.
Which would bring, plus we have reserves there, right, Jody? Or I should say, carry forward.
Carry forwards.
Carry forwards.
Yeah.
What does that, what does that bring, with carry forward, what does that bring us to, Jody?
We currently are at one hundred and thirty-one thousand two hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Exclusive of the forty.
I'm sorry?
Exclusive of the forty thousand dollar add in this budget.
That's before the forty thousand, yeah, so it'd be...
About a hundred seventy thousand dollars.
One thousand, yeah.
Right, okay, I just want to be clear. And, well, we started last year, as I recall, with about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, or something like that, is what the total was, if I recall, so we're really maintaining...
No, you started with a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, actually.
Almost two hundred thousand, so we're, we're, we're really, well, going down to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars annual, not carry, carry forward plus this amount.
Okay. Do we have to do each one of these individually?
What, what, contingency? Well, the contingency one we definitely should do.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we approve Department Head, Town Manager, and Budget Committee recommendations of forty thousand dollars.
Second.
Good call. Discussion, all's in favor, four zero. That was quick.
Allison.
Let's see, we don't have a hundred...
You're running a bar. You haven't gotten to that point.
Yeah, the, um, town, oh, well, then the rest is, is a revenue discussion, we'll get to that in a minute, right? Because we have to go back to the revenue sheets.
Yes.
Midco solid waste assessment is, well, just kind of given it at the two thirty-seven zero zero seven, which is our thirty-one percent, yeah, we got forty-two percent, whatever.
I mean, if we're going to talk about that, we're going to talk about all of them.
Yeah, exactly.
There should be a list, just like somebody said, the list of assessments, and then we pick out anything we want to talk about, but we've talked about that a lot.
This is Camden's portion of the midco solid waste assessment for the FY twenty-three budget.
The largest portion.
The largest portion. The other, yes. Any questions or motion?
It's, it's an assessment.
A lot of that is to pay for pumping of water from...
It is, it is, and which...
Quarry to the wastewater treatment plant.
And the wastewater treatment plant charges for it.
We actually have a little bit of a conflict of interest.
A little bit.
Okay, I make a motion, we approve the midco solid waste assessment of, that's recommended by Department Head, Town Manager, and Budget Committee of two thirty-seven zero zero seven dollars.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor? The rest of the items here are assessments by the school district, which I believe, Jody, you have the correct numbers in here for the school, schools, five-town MSAD twenty-eight, as well as Knox County tax, and for the record, the school, Camden School assessment is thirteen million three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Two hundred and seventy-five.
Two hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars total, and the Knox County tax assessment for, no comment, is one million five hundred and seventy-one thousand...
Fourteen million.
Fourteen million.
Oh, sorry. No, that's total assessments, no. Knox County tax is one million five seventy-one three hundred and eighty.
All right, I see.
For total assessment from those two chunks of fourteen million eight forty-six nine fifty-five.
I thought that was going to go up more than Knox County assessment.
It didn't.
Why didn't that?
I'm not going to complain.
Don't ask, don't ask.
So really, what we have left, Audra, is go very back to our, our packet way at the front, it's like it would take me an hour to get there to talk about the total revenue picture as the last component of the tax year, so we can determine what net actually winds up on the ballot. So in that regard, let me get to the little sheets first, that principal...
That's...
We have our, Jody, I don't know if we have a select board total town expenditure number?
Expenditure summary, yes.
And Budget Committee, do we have that now? We make...
Yes, 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 yes.
Screen.
For the general fund, the total is ten million four hundred eighty-one thousand six hundred fifty-three dollars.
Okay, that reflects all the changes that we've made in this meeting. Did you write that down, Mark?
Yep, got it.
Okay, so, I mean, that's just a culmination of all the motions we've just made, and I'm just giving it for reference. Mark, go ahead. Oh, you say goodbye.
I say goodbye to Chris.
Could I have that number one more time, Jody?
Thousand four hundred eighty-one, excuse me, ten million four hundred eighty-one thousand six hundred fifty-three dollars.
Okay, that's the total before revenues. Now, the total revenues, of course, we're going to discuss next, and let's go down to the revenue sources, which are plentiful, and just see if we have any questions or comments on those revenue sources. And the only one, I mean, there's a whole bunch of long list here, but these are reflecting all the current big numbers for excise taxes, state revenue sharing, is that relatively solid now, Audra?
Yeah.
That's great.
That's great.
That's a good number, yeah. The only items that was mentioned, that we didn't mention, is it was adding a line for a revenue of about fifteen thousand dollars for the snowball workers' comp contribution, I don't know what you want to call it, Jody. You need another line for that, I assume that is, is that under charge for services, income from departments?
Yeah, I'm going to add it in there right now, if you, if that's okay.
Yeah, while we're doing that, while you're doing that, we want the full numbers, are there any other comments? Go ahead, whatever your name is, Sophie.
So, on the, on the vehicle excise tax, I'm surprised at the jump between six fifty-eight in, oh, actual to date.
Oh, Patrick.
I get it, I get it, I get it. I'm done, thank you, I get it.
And actually, as of right now, Sophie, we're just shy of eight hundred thousand collected.
So a million is not unrealistic, thanks, Jody, I'm sorry, I'm, it's late.
Why is the Rockport assessment reimbursement in yellow? I'm just curious.
Is that she changed it, remember, because of the changeover for...
Oh, thank you, Jody, thank you, thank you. Are there any other revenues that, general revenues, I don't think we talked about any others, because Audra was happy with them all.
Allison, first.
I really can't see, like, I'm going to start sitting somewhere else.
What's that?
You don't see my hands, it's interesting.
I just, I'm lying to the right side. Go ahead.
Coping mechanism, I think.
Maybe, maybe.
Now, do we care, I know Beth had made a comment at one point about the actual source of the injury that...
Oh.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh.
That sounds like we were just really wrong, and we just perpet, said a bunch of stuff in a meeting over and over again that was totally wrong.
So it was while they were Parks and Rec employee that they actually got the injury?
Though we shouldn't have.
The general fund.
Parks or Rec, that was not your bet.
Yeah, that's a good question, Allison.
Okay.
It's a Parks employee that was injured.
Okay.
For Parks.
Okay, well, I might, that's why I think the fifteen thousand dollars is not punitive, because they are just carrying something on their books for workers' comp for having so many, so many employees at Snowball, but if the board of directors got to do that...
I mean, I think we should base it on something, we should, if we can't ask them, well, if we got rid of the snowball, what would our rate be? I mean, that's really what we have to...
Yeah, I mean, they can't.
But they can, can they give a range?
No.
I tried to do this with the dams, too, and, and they're just like, they, I mean, we could apply as a totally imaginary town.
It's not huge, if, if, you know, it's just recognizing there was something, but in addition to salaries of the snowball, that's where they had the workers' comp, I don't care if it's ten thousand or fifteen thousand, it's just recognition, it's a real number. It's probably much higher than that. But is there anything else?
Yeah, Jody, so the, the Town Manager, there's a difference in the income from all departments?
Yep.
Five sixty-five for the town and four seventy-one for the Budget Committee, is it because of the ninety-eight thousand dollars in Rockport that they didn't know about?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
It doesn't really square, there's a four thousand delta there, but I trust you that that's the right thing.
No, I think the, to that end, I think the, what I'm hearing is, well, we have the total, is there a total for that, yeah, but the board, we should be looking at, what would the new number be for when we added in the fifteen thousand and on the FY twenty? Would it be to the Town Manager number?
The entire revenue line, the entire revenues under the Town Manager would be four million one hundred ninety-two thousand eight hundred...
Okay, you're doing the total, total, okay, okay.
Eight hundred what?
Twelve.
Good. Well, okay, all right, let's, let's skip down then, all the things, revenue...
I understand.
From these items, the biggest change we kind of pay attention to is the big one, other financing sources, which is comprised of, we can go on the other ones, too, but the surplus and use of tip, but if there are any small ones that I've jumped past, please comment.
I just have a question about the, are we really still getting the, I thought the cable franchise?
Which one?
Please, we're going away.
That, no, it's still, we're still getting it.
You know, for as hard, I feel like we're pretty hard on the cable company sometimes, but they, at least, at least we have an agreement with them that does give us some benefits, and whereas the water company uses...
Or all these new fiber companies that are...
Right, it's like...
Stringing up infrastructure and forcing us to move stuff and not paying anything.
Right. We actually get, we're supposed to get free internet from the cable company if we got it from them, but anyway, it just...
All right, go ahead, Mark.
I just have a quick question. How come interest earned checking went from ninety-two thousand in two thousand nineteen to thirty thousand this year? Where'd all that, why's it dropped that much?
We, we had to sit down with our bank, and they gave us options to, all three were, you're going to have a lower interest rate for now, we are on the, it went from, this is about a year ago, it went from two point five percent down to point four percent.
Whoa.
On our cash.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah.
I see.
Once that starts rising, we, we wouldn't go below point four, once it rises, we will rise with it, but I have, I have a meeting next month with the bank to revisit this.
Okay. That's sort of, the banks don't make enough money, so I'm glad we're helping to supplement it for them.
The big, the elephant in the room is, the question to me is the following, and that is, we're proposing an eight hundred thousand dollar use of surplus, where, what is the surplus number now, after any adjustments you have to make because of clearing out certain accounts, versus where it will be when we take out the eight hundred thousand?
We're at about four million on the assigned fund balance at June thirty, we just got our audit in today. We are proposed to use, well, in FY twenty-two, we used nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand out of unassigned fund balance. fund balance.
So that leaves us with about 3, 3, 3?
About 3 million.
Okay, we're still in good shape. And so from the.
We have to set aside 16.7% of the budget for three months' worth of bills, which is 1.7 million.
So we're still really good.
I mean, there's nothing about that number that's anything special, or just set by some select part of the past.
It's a policy, it's always, it's just a policy.
So it's, yeah.
But again, the four, where is the 800,000 coming out of 3 million?
3.2.
No, the four.
So once we deduct the 800, we have 3.2.
You said we had, confused. We said we had $4 million, and we, and we used in '22, 959.
But then we added quite a bit.
And then we added, yeah, FY '21, 4,79,000 is our unassigned fund balance.
Yep.
FY '22, we took 959,000 out of that.
Yep.
Um, so at the end of FY.
Yeah, go ahead. Did we, I heard somebody say we added something. How much did we add?
Well, that, we, we did, we added, but that 4 million is total, everything, after all the cards fell at the end of June 2021. That's the most recent accurate number we have for the, for the unassigned fund balance.
So that leaves us with 3 million.
So that, that number, just to be very clear, the unassigned fund balance changed by like, was it like 100,000 between FY '21 and F, or FY '20 and FY, sorry, FY '21 and FY '22? No, we're in FY '22, FY '20 and FY '21.
How do we add to the, to the.
Wait, let's close on the, let's close on one question.
Or we get more revenue?
Okay, so that's why I thought.
What if, after the 800,000 is allocated in this budget, what remains?
3.2.
So for, let me just talk you through this again, because that's how I do it too.
How about, do I share your screen or something?
79,000. FY '22, we took 959,000 out of that.
Yep.
That's with, at the, at, at the end of this fiscal year, June 2022, we will have 8.1 million.
Yep.
Now, audit, which will happen at the end of fiscal year, we will potentially add more to that.
Of course.
But if, say we didn't, we're going to use 800,000 out of that.
Right, which leaves you to 2.3.
Yes.
3.2.
Yeah.
3.2.
How much?
3.2.
No.
Yes.
If you have 3.1 left.
We don't, Bob, we have four.
It's coming out of the four, not the 3.0.
It's what?
It's coming out of the 4 million.
Okay.
No, that's all she just said.
What I heard was 4 million dollars was our audited amount from F, end of FY '21, correct? Cherry, is that correct?
We're going to, we're going to end up with 2.3 million after, if we use that 800,000 for FY '23.
That's what you said.
If we don't add anything.
Yes, yes, and we will add something.
Which we highly likely will, but.
We're only required to have about 1.7, so we have about 600,000, 500, 600,000. The question is, is that healthy enough? I mean, it's really the differential in putting this much amount of money, given the economic situation we have today with inflation probably not reducing but going up, and also other, other economic forecasters, we, we may, I agree, I bet you we add a half million, you know, I'm just guessing, but it brings it up to 2.8. That gives us a $1 million cushion, a 1.1 million cushion going forward, if that's the right number, I don't know that it is. I, it just, what are we really gaining by using 800,000 in total taxation? That's the question I have. I think it's high. For example, I mean, it's just a philosophical thing, by the way, we've done a great job collectively, thanks to Audrey and Jody managing all the budgets we've had, at maintaining that number closer to the better part of 3 million. And this is the first time since I've been on the board, we've, we've dipped down to the 2 million level. And yes, we were in the middle of a very difficult time, but if we were to reduce the 800 to say, I don't know, 5 or 600,000, what, what does that do collectively to the overall tax effect of revenues minus the, the budget we had, 10 million? I guess that's my question.
So, question, so we're proposing to use that 800,000 to reduce taxes?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, then, one comment I have is, I know we like to be above what the recommended from, you know, long-term, is, long-term audit recommends we have. My one question is, with the new assessments we've had, I think it's important to help out our citizens, because the assessments have hit, I guess, the lower and middle-income people more than the, the higher end.
Yeah, I, I get that, but I'm trying, but I'm trying to, where I'm going with this is, I think the differential to the taxpayer is noise in comparison to the potential impacts of reevaluation and that kind of thing, and we can prove that by just doing a couple of quick numbers here. And I'm just, I get your point, but.
Well, let's see, let's do the quick numbers. But, but what you're basically saying is that the policy that we have is, that's been set is meaningless, and that you really think it should be about double?
No, I think the policy should be less, actually, because I think the, the, 16.7% of three months, you get, this town, I don't think we've ever seen less than a cash in the bank of less than 1, 1 to 2 million. Is that correct, Jody? On an annual basis? So I think it's, it's overplayed.
No, 16.7%, that puts us at, that's like 1.7. Right, but you're saying you feel more comfortable keeping it at around 3?
And that, no, well, no, 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 no. What I'm, I'm talking about is the total account, that, yeah, not changing the 1.7, I'm thinking, we're dropping down to 2.3.
Which is still above the 1.7.
It is above the 1.7. It's just that I'm questioning whether that should be done now or held in the back pocket for the, for the economy in its current state it's in. That's the question.
So you're proposing to raise the 800?
It's what?
No, he wants to reduce it to 500.
This question is, Joey, you have all the numbers. If you made that 600, 800, just for an example, if you made that 800,000, 500,000, what does it do to the bottom line for taxes for the year?
I'm going to put all these numbers into the select board recommendation, so I have true numbers.
Exactly, that's perfect.
Well, she's doing that.
Yeah.
I have to say, I agree, this is a, this is not a time to be underfunded, not knowing what's going on with the economy, with the world. And yet, at the same time, I'm also concerned about, it's, it's a tough balance.
That's why I'm, I'm just trying to quantify it, Mark, because I agree with you. This is, this, what can happen to people is, you know, by the way, we're, Roger, about 35% of the town budget, right? The school's about 6, well, 30%. The, the, the school's 65%. That has a much more dramatic impact on taxes than we do, and we'll get to that in a second. But.
So you wanted 500,000?
Yeah.
Yeah. Because currently, we're showing it, I'm trying to get to the overall tax number, go back to it, up top. The hell is?
10,400.
Well, that's.
10,481,653.
But that's minus, minus the revenues, and what does that give us for a, a net general fund budget?
Net general fund budget would be 6,682,226, which would represent an 11.9% increase over the current year.
And I, that doesn't compute. Right now, we're showing 6.3 million at 5.8%. How can that double with adding 300,000? It doesn't.
Doesn't, yeah.
That's the, that's what the, um, the.
But you see where I'm, I'm looking at the.
Oh, well, no, if the difference.
Budget Committee amount, which is net general fund of 6.3 million, and that's 5.8% increase in taxes. Oh, well, on budget, excuse me.
Budget.
And, and you said it's 6 million what? Yeah, there's no way that can be 11%.
Well, 5% was the difference between 5, 9, 72, between these two numbers, so.
I guess.
It's showing as 11.9 in the formulas. It's not me that's calculating, it's the formula.
No, that makes sense to me.
22.
Basically doubled the increase.
Mm-hmm. In the net.
On the net budget.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
Later.
So the.
6.6 million divided by.
The, keep in mind, we're, we're going from the net in FY '22, 5,972,630.
Right.
Yeah, that totally makes sense.
Yep.
All right. Okay, so that's, that's what it would be, which is, that's, that's, that's a big chunk. That's, that is a big chunk. That is a big jump, huge jump. I, I was thinking more of, 5, 9, 2, 5.92 is the FY '22 budget, right? 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5, 5,